The school board work session begins in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board work session begins in one minute.
Good morning. I now call the December 9, 2021 administrative briefing and work session on Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 a.m. Please silence your electronic device and remove hats to avoid disturbing others. I now ask the school board attorney to suspend the use of this work session.
This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form and hand it to the school board secretary. After the Board and superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the secretary will call speakers' names in the order received. At the podium, speakers are asked to state their full name and address and to spell their last names. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important roles. Thank you, Chair Cummings.
Thank you. We'll begin the administrative work session with the superintendent's administrative briefing.
Good morning, Chair Cummings, members of the Board. Good to see you all this morning. I do not have any items for the briefing so we can continue with the agenda. Thank you.
Okay. All right. First up, we're going to have Support Services, Operations Emergency Management Facilities, Mr. David Hurley and our school board attorney.
Good morning, Chair Cummings, Board members. Dr. Gullett, Mr. Powers, and Mr. Prestapino. This morning, I have for you the school board member residence areas, and this is a map, but the item is specifically related to a Florida statute 1001.36. Generally speaking, there are about three parts of that statute that we'll be addressing here today. I've done this and prepared it in conjunction, coordination with Mr. Powers, and so my plan is to show you the data portion that I've done and then hand it off to him quickly for any discussion of whatever the substance of the statute is. So, we have a map. The three pieces, or the three rough pieces that I mentioned is, the statute requires that you create at least five board member residence areas and that each one of those residence areas is balanced, that is an equal proportion of the current population as nearly as possible that you can do. And then, the last of the three that I wanted to mention from the statute is that this kind of an action is only allowed in odd-numbered years. So, it anticipates, the statute anticipates particularly things like this, the decennial census. So, we're in 2021 now. It had happened last year. The census happened last year in 2021, I mean, in 2020, so we have relatively fresh data to work with. And I've also, excuse me, I've gone along, prepared this map using guidance that we, or you all received from Mr. Wilcox when he was here and did his presentation, and he laid out some parameters. I think he mentioned the average, I believe that ideal number was 75,182, and he gave a plus or minus 5% of that number of parameters. And so, that's the guidance that I followed. The last thing I will say about it is that I sought to make compact and contiguous areas on the map, meaning the smoother boundaries as possible, but still achieve the goal of the numbers, and following identifiable, readily identifiable, boundaries, in this case mostly, actually roads. And so, for the most part, followed major routes, and then where necessary, went down to lower-level neighborhood streets and that to achieve the maximum or the optimum balance. And so, with that, we can take a look at the map, or I'll hand it over to Mr. Powers and if there's any conversation on the substance of the statute or any questions about the map, I'll be happy to entertain that.
Mr. Hurley properly states the fact that under 1001.36, we are required to maintain a equivalency of population between the districts. So, within Marion County School District and the entire Marion County, we are required for each board member to be assigned 75,182, plus or minus 5%, people living in that area. And that is a school board member residency district. That's simply where the school board members live. Each school board member, however, does represent all citizens within the county.
Per Florida statute.
Per Florida statute. That's correct. And so, in the past, what we have done is board members are assigned to particular schools, essentially as liaisons to those schools. However, that is a separate consideration from these maps. These maps simply require that we have 75,000 people, an equal number essentially of people that are assigned to that residence area. So, there's a difference and a distinction between the schools you might be assigned, which will not be changing. The Board can change who is assigned to a particular school at any time in its own discretion, but this is something we can only do in odd-numbered years, and it is something that we have to do after the decennial census, which only occurs every 10 years. So, again, just to reiterate, all board members serve all citizens of Marion County, and all board members are equally able to be called upon to address any concern with any school anywhere in the district. So, that's important to remember. Now, when we are drawing these boundaries and guidelines, the Supreme Court has given us some guidelines regarding specifics of what we can and cannot do. The primary one is that they wanted to avoid having us create districts which were extremely odd-shaped or districts which fell outside of the bounds of what would just be, as Mr. Hurley, he termed it, and as the Supreme Court deems it, compact and contiguous. So, we wouldn't want to, there are many multiple ways to potentially slice the pie, so to speak, but what we wouldn't want to do is create some strange star-shaped district that went way out into, they call it a salamander-shaped district, that went way out from one end of the county, all the way out to the other end of the county, and a sliver off to here. And those sorts of things would be, would call into question whether or not we were assigning districts based on essentially just trying to equalize the population. Now, the map that Mr. Hurley, he has worked on here, normalizes the boundaries of those population districts and follows major highways and roads, geographic boundaries, which are presumed to be permissible within the Supreme Court's discretion. So, the school board, in looking at these, at these districts as assigned, can certainly alter, make changes, again, multiple and nearly probably infinite ways to slice the pie, so to speak. This is a way that works. This is a good recommendation, in my legal opinion, that takes into account compact boundaries, contiguous boundaries, that are all stuck together, there's not a section that goes way off to one side or the other, or divided sections, which would even be, you know, perhaps more of a problem. So, with that being said, we would open it up to a review of the map that has been published and is present before us, and if board members or anyone has any questions, we can speak to those and I can hopefully answer.
Chair, excuse me. I have a couple of thoughts, comments, and clarifications. First of all, it's really clear in this visual where our population centers lie. In other words, in order to get 75,000 people in District 5, you look at the...
How broad the area.
Yes, how broad the area is. So, that was of interest in terms of future planning and things we've been talking about as far as where we need schools. The other comment that I have is that it's certainly confusing to voters, and I know this isn't anything we can change, it would have to change by statute, but the fact of the matter is, is we do serve every single student, and our elections are at large, but yet we serve districts, and that makes it really confusing for voters, because so many of them will say, "Well, I'd love to vote for you, but you're not in my district." And then you say, "No, it's an at-large election." They kind of look at you like, "You trying to pull the wool over my eyes?" So, to me, it's just, you know, confusing, and I wish that it could be simplified, but that's probably a conversation for another day. The other thing that was interesting to me, and the last thing, is that in terms of the 75,000 makeup, it's actual bodies, not voters.
Right.
Which was also interesting.
Wilcox indicated heartbeats.
Heartbeat, that's right. Just straight-up population. So, I learned a few things in this process. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. R. Any other board members' comments? Go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Hurley, because frankly, in my opinion, this is a much cleaner district map than what our previous district lines were. I don't know if we could pull up the one that shows the blue lines all over where our other districts were. Yeah, it's another tab. It's the other tab. There you go. So, if you can take a look at how all the lines were kind of zigzagged, and I don't think that's salamander, like the Supreme Court was saying, but in order to get, 10 years ago, in order to get the number of population, there was a little bit more of a jagged edge to several of our districts. And this new drawing does have very distinct, this is State Road 40, this is Fort King, this is, you know, some very distinct designations that make it much easier to understand exactly where the boundaries are. So, I'm grateful to Mr. Hurley for his work on this, because I think that this, and also, as we all know, somewhere in that little area, I believe, according to statute, that we also, as board members, cannot redistrict ourselves out of our district where we're sitting board member. So, I don't believe that was said today. My understanding is where those little black boxes are, is a roundabout area, not necessarily the exact location of where our residences are personally, but taking that into consideration was also a part of the map planning. So, thank you. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Chair. Sabrina?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Again, yeah, I reiterate, thanks for getting into this in such a clean fashion. I see it as quite clean and understandable to the population that we serve and that we're actually a part of, but we come in and it's not for us necessarily, to your point, to explain it all. It's so important that we represent an area and live in an area, and that is so important, I think, to the voters, to the community, that we actually do live, and it's kind of distributed out that way. And life, especially when you get government involved, is confusing, and it's very difficult. And there's an enormous amount of mistrust, so the more clarity you have and clean, one, two, three, four, five, is beautiful, you know, in my estimation. So, I thank you for doing that, and Wilcox, for getting involved in a very clean, very sensible way, because there's nothing much more important than voting. So...
Thank you, Board member.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley and Mr. Powers for your due diligence and your team, or whoever you've been working with also. If there's any, thank you so much, and we appreciate that.
Did it fast and well.
Well, he was doing some work. We had at-length conversation last week, Mr. Hurley and I, coming back from Tampa concerning this, because we wanted to make sure that it was clean, as clean as possible, and that the community was able to understand what this really, what this map really means. It just equalizes the districts as far as for the population, correct? Yes. This is my turn.
And the two things that I would add is that, number one, as Ms. Campbell pointed out, this map is much more compact, and as the Supreme Court indicates in looking at these things, compact and contiguous is a plus, and that's going to be presumed to be a proper and properly drawn map, and if anything, this significantly increases that for us. And secondly, we normally, at the decennial census, would have, these results would be, would have been received by us much, much sooner. The 2020 results, however, were received actually nine months late, and so, by the time we got them, we had extremely limited time to have a turnaround to come up with the maps that we were going to use in order to continue within the odd-numbered years. And thanks to board members, including Ms. Campbell, for having brought that up and brought that specific item to our attention, and then also Mr. Hurley, at working with his colleagues in other districts as well to get this happening as quickly as possible, and to Mr. Wilcox for his assistance in helping make this happen, because otherwise, without everyone working together, this would have been much more difficult of a task. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Any public input? All right. Again, thank you again, Mr. Hurley, and to all those that played a part in making sure that we get a clean copy. This is, these boundaries are going to be for the next 10 years, am I correct, to the next census?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. MTI, MTC updates. Mr. Frazier, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Whitehouse. Mr. Hurley, I think that's the shortest presentation you've ever given the Board. Ever. Ever, ever. Literally. Good morning.
Good morning, Reverend Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board members, and Dr. Gullett. We appreciate you all having us here today. Mr. Kelly and I are here to provide some updates on Marion Technical Institute and Marion Technical College. So, at the beginning of the school year, we were asked to take a hard look at Marion Technical Institute, the programs that we offer, and really look at, you know, are there any opportunities for shifts, changes, improvements, as we evaluate the work that we do at that campus? And with those shifts and changes, we're certainly talking about next school year, not in the immediate present. So, we spent months, obviously, evaluating what we're doing on those campuses. This was a team collaborative effort, not just myself and the CTE team, Mr. Kelly as the principal of MTI, Ms. Talbert Irving, we talked with Stephen Ayers in School Choice, really a lot of people taking a look at what we offer at this school and making sure that we're providing some good feedback to you all as a board and any recommendations that we may make. So, I want to start off with just giving a quick history of MTI, just to make sure we're all on the same page for the benefit of the Board and the public. MTI started back in 2005, and those of you remember, it used to be the old Forest High School campus. I walked those halls myself many years ago, and when we built the new Forest High School, we had this property left over that we needed to repurpose, and so, the concept was born to create a technical high school, something that would provide a great focus for CTE, give students the opportunity to come in, work in some unique learning environments that partnered with the business community, and gave our students the opportunity to then either learn the skills they needed to get right out and work, or pursue on to advanced degrees in post-secondary work. So, originally, the school was targeting 11th and 12th graders. Students had to provide their own transportation, they came there full-time, they took all of their courses at MTI like they would at traditional school, and then at the end of the day, after they graduated, they would actually graduate back at their base school with the normal class. And so, over time, as we've progressed, one of the things that we've done a really good job of, as a result of MTI, is really focusing more on career and technical education, and how do we build those programs up in our seven traditional high schools as well? Make sure that we are providing those same accesses everywhere. And so, as we've shifted over time, we've had to make some adjustments to MTI throughout history. We have had to reexamine how we offer the programs, not being able to offer it as a full-time school. We currently now offer morning and afternoon shifts where students can come in for part-time days, taking their core classes at their base school, and then coming in for career and technical education. And we've also had to expand to 9th and 10th graders, which we had not had to do in the past. So, that gives you just kind of a quick overview of where we've come from with MTI, and I do want to orient everybody just to the campus itself as well, just so we know where we're talking about MTI. So, when you're looking at this picture, the front buildings, Buildings 1, 2, and 3 that you see closest to Fort King Street, those are the district offices for District East. That's where our district staff currently live, and certainly, we have a handful of more staff that are moving into just those three buildings. The other buildings, Building 4, which used to be B-Wing when I was a student there, and all of those buildings to the back of the campus are all of the current MTI campuses, where our students have all their CTE courses available to them. So, here's where we currently stand with Marion Technical Institute. We just want to provide some of these numbers for you, so you can see what we're looking at. So, currently, we have 78 full-time students and 172 part-time students that attend MTI. Of that, 41 of those students are currently seniors, so they will be graduating at the end of the school year. And you can see the breakdown between morning and afternoon classes, and we certainly have more students that come first thing in the morning to take classes than we do coming in the afternoon. The total FTE that we generate, our full-time equivalent funding that we get for students that are attending classes there, is just over $1 million. And then you can see our expenditure breakdown to operate the school. Our salary expenses are roughly $1.5 million for the staff that we have at MTI. Transportation expenses, because we are busing students in as an option from all seven high schools to get to that school, morning and afternoon, is roughly $700,000. And then the operational expenses, this is purely just looking at paying the electric bill and the water bill. It's not looking at any facility needs or upgrades that may occur as a result of any issues. So, when you look at that expense line at the bottom, you'll see that annually, it costs us about $1.3 million more than we take in for that school to be able to operate Marion Technical Institute. So, this gives you just a quick picture of the career and technical education programs that we offer at MTI, and how many students are in each of those programs. So, the programs we offer, automotive, construction, culinary arts, early childhood education, first responder program, which is our firefighting EMT program, and information technology and welding. And you'll see it's broken down for you, how many students are in that program that attend just in the morning, just in the afternoon, or we do have a handful that are full-time enrolled at MTI, taking all of their courses there. And then you'll see off to the side, the total number of students that are enrolled in each of those CTE programs. So, I think it's important to note, when we look at the numbers here, that if we were looking at a typical high school, our seven traditional high schools, you usually need about 100 students or more to be able to offer a program, just because of scheduling. If you have too few students, those students that aren't in those classes are now overloading another class somewhere else. And so, if this was a traditional high school, we'd be looking at needing at least 100 students per program to offer that program as a standalone option. So, we wanted to provide, as we evaluated, what we see are some of the strengths of MTI, and then also some of the challenges that we're currently facing at the school. So, the strengths, it certainly, one, provides a small school option. You won't find another high school that only has 200 students in it, it's just not possible. So, that has been a benefit for students that like that feel of a smaller school. Certainly, a longstanding tradition of career and technical education, partnering with local businesses to make sure that we try to stay on top of what's coming in industry and that we're meeting the needs of our community. We do house some unique programs that are at MTI that support the rest of the district. You're probably familiar with YPP, our Young Parenting Program, which is housed at MTI. The Ignite Program, which is an opportunity for our middle school students that have not completed their units, but age-wise should be in high school. We give them the opportunity to come and finish up and then matriculate onto their high school from there. And also, our ESE Work-Study Program is housed at MTI, and that's serving all of our high school students. So, if you are an ESE student and you choose to defer your graduation, because you want to build some additional work skills before you go out into the world, we house that program there. And so, we have several classrooms of students where they've completed all of the course requirement to graduate, but they defer their graduation until they've complete this program. And then also, the Career Academy, which is another unique program that we offer to all high school students, that's housed through the College of Central Florida. The Career Academy gives students who are not your typical dual enrollment student the opportunity to dual-enroll at CF their senior year. They take their last core classes through the We the People Program to finish up their senior English, Government, and Economics class, and then they have the opportunity to take some of the AS programs at CF. Most of the students end up doing the EMT program and then matriculate onto our FIRE College from there, but we do have a few students that come through Career Academy that will do the early childhood AS program or some of the other options at CF. So, the challenges, as we have seen them at MTI right now, one, because we've done such a good job in the district of building up career and technical education throughout the district, we see that we have a lot of duplicated programs that are offered, not only at MTI, but they're offered at multiple other schools in the district. And I'll show you that in just a little bit when we get to that slide. Certainly, as we showed you on the previous slide, the cost of operation becomes a challenge for us each year. There are some definite facility needs. As I mentioned, this campus was a repurpose from a previous school. It's been around for quite a while, and there are certainly some improvements that are needed. We challenged with low enrollment, as I showed you before in our enrollment numbers. That is a yearly thing. At our peak with MTI, we were roughly 400 students, so it's never been a huge program, but we have struggled over the last few years to try and keep those numbers up. And then transportation poses its own challenges, not just for normal transportation issues, but because students are bused from every high school during the day, what we run into a lot of times for our students in the farther-reaching areas of Marion County is that they're only able to stay at their base school long enough to take three classes, and then they come to MTI and take two classes, so they're one class short that they end up having to make up on virtual school, because they have to account for the additional bus rides that most students wouldn't if they were just at one school and staying there. So, those are the challenges as we see them currently in MTI. So, I mentioned before that we do see duplicated programs, so again, wanted to give you the list of programs that are currently offered at MTI and where we see those programs at other high schools in the district. So, automotive program is also offered at North Marion High School and Vanguard High School. Both of those programs have existed for a good while. Career Academy at CF, as I mentioned, is a dual enrollment opportunity, and certainly, dual enrollment is run through all seven of our high schools. dual enrollment is run through all seven of our high schools. Any student at any high school has the opportunity to dual enroll through CF. Construction program is offered at Lake Weir, Culinary Arts is offered at four of our high schools. Early childhood education is also found at Nellin. The first responders program, which really is a lead-in to our FIRE College, is really, and it's a longer duplication, but it's a duplication of how we operate the Career Academy currently. Those students do have the opportunity to matriculate to the FIRE College as well. Information Technology, even though our certification that we currently offer at MTI is a little different than the other schools, we do have obviously variations of information technology at four of our high schools. And then welding is currently offered at Nellin High School. The three programs at the bottom are the three that I mentioned that are unique, that are not CTE programs, that obviously are not duplicated because these programs serve students from across the county. All right. So as we looked at our evaluation, we really felt that there were two options that we could present to the board to consider. Option one, certainly we can maintain our current status at MTI. We've already begun looking at recruiting kids through the Magnet Expo that took place on November 18th. MTI was in attendance and has begun the recruiting process just like all of our schools have. So we could certainly just continue to maintain our operation at that school. Option two, which is the one that we would recommend, would be to really look at, how do we revision Marion Technical Institute? How can we retool it and transition into a new way of work for the future that can better service the needs of our schools and our community? And Mr. Kelly's going to talk to you about some of those thoughts in just a moment. With that, we would certainly want to provide school choice options for our current students. We've had plenty of conversations with Mr. Ayers, who was very supportive. If we went with this option to make sure that our students all had homes and were able to get to the program they wanted and could continue those programs on through graduation to make sure that they were program completers and earned the certifications that were entrusted in. We would like to look at designing some new academies that are unique to a new school, that are not found anywhere else, that would really fill that niche and get back to that original vision of MTI. And then certainly could utilize those cost savings to help us fund greater choice options. And we've done a great job of expanding choice options. Something that wasn't available when MTI was first created was that ability to really attend any school you want in Marion County. And now our students have that, and so we've got to use what we can to really maximize all of our schools and all of our options for students. The one exception, certainly, you know, we recommend looking at retooling and transitioning. We would like to keep the Young Parenting Program and our ESE Work-Study Program at MTI because it serves all of our schools and it's centrally located. It makes sense that if we were to do any type of transition, that we could keep those two programs there. So I will let Mr. Kelly now talk about some of the thoughts for new vision.
Anytime we talk about new vision, I get excited because I like looking at the future and we like seeing what the students need, what the community needs. We really need to go back to what made MTI successful in the first place. You know, 15 or so years ago, we got together with the community, we talked about, you know, what is needed, what's not being offered in our schools, what jobs are available, you know, what leads better into CF, into college, and that was a community effort that helped develop MTI. And we really need to go back to the roots because that was successful. We've just kind of outlived it now. So let's do it again. Let's get back out there, let's talk to our community, let's talk to the CEP, let's talk to CF, let's talk to the colleges. What is a career pathway that we are not doing now? You know, how can we reinvent something that we haven't thought of yet possibly or we're not doing currently? And that leads us to a lot of different things. Those conversations have actually already started. I've been working with MTC, with the, all of the trades and all of the manufacturing companies of Marion County to discuss things that are needed right now. So some of that talk's taking place. And I get excited with the trades, you know, we really don't do a whole lot with the trades in our school system right now. And so we're trying to develop, we're starting an HVAC program. Matter of fact, when we come back in January 6th, you know, plumbing is on board again. Been talking to the manufacturing businesses about mechanical maintenance workers. And, you know, we need to look at these things strongly to how we get high school students access to these programs. Because these programs are not, you know, we think of this as being students who don't have any aspiration to go to college and don't have any aspirations to move on. But these programs really do that. This is the basis to get started. You know, you can become a HVAC person and sure, get a job right away, right now in Marion County and work, but that can lead on to many things with degrees and controls and ending up up the road at the University of Florida in this. So there's a great pathway, not only for our students who are ready to go to work, but for our college-bound students also. So, you know, the ideas start flowing of how can we put some academies together? Maybe there's an academy of the trades so that students could come to a facility such as MTC, work on the trades that they are interested in, and get their core education also in an integrated format. And that way, we could possibly have students that, yes, are ready to go to work, working alongside with students who are going to a university and them working together, you know, in an academy. There's some great potential there. The manufacturers of Marion County, Mr. Ma, who is the organization that works with all our manufacturing, they are so excited that we're even having conversations because they are so desperate for their workforce to get things going and to get people interested in the manufacturing in Marion County. You know, they're on board as a partner that would love to see us get something moving with our high school students, engaged with our technical college and moving on. Just as early as this week itself, we received notification from Tallahassee in the chancellor of Mac's office, who oversees CTE, that there is a dual enrollment grant available. We don't know a whole lot about it. There's webinar later this week for us to learn about it, but it's going to put money towards high school students working on dual enrollment with technical colleges and CF also with the state colleges. But we're going to look at that opportunity of what can we do right now? You know, we talk about visioning and for the future, but we have an opportunity right now to put a lot of programs in place at Marion Technical College so that students can come in and receive post-secondary credit during their school day. Much like we're doing an AM and a PM session at MTI right now, we could do the very same thing of students coming to MTC for a morning session or an afternoon session and getting a lot of those same classes. So that opportunity is there that we'll be exploring heavy here in the next week. Love Tallahassee, they sent us this grant proposal two days ago and it's due next week. So we'll work hard on that. But we see this as a great opportunity to revision, to get energized and really step things up of what's needed in our district right now in CTE.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. And yes, we, I mean, it was perfect timing when that grant was released, and Mr. Kelly and I got very excited that, all the possibilities that we could really evaluate with that. So potential next steps, if the board does decide to go with option two, just wanted to kind of lay out what that would look like for you, just so you're aware. Certainly, we would need to have a parent meeting so we could discuss with parents and students what those school choice options are. We've already had conversations with Mr. Ayers, who is our director of school choice, and he would certainly work with those students on a priority basis to make sure if they want to stay with automotive, that we can get them to a school that has automotive or culinary or any of the other programs, so we can make sure that happens for next school year. We would also need to work through HR, which we've given them a heads-up so they are aware that we would have to do any type of staff placements for next school year, so they are aware to be able to work through that. We would have to look at relocating these three programs on staffing plans, not physically relocating them. But if we do not have an MTI staffing plan, we would have to look at housing these programs elsewhere. We would need to look at redesigning our Ignite Program, which is again, houses our students who are not quite to that high school level but are aging out of middle school. We do need to begin a design phase in the spring for what that new vision would look like. Mr. Kelly's got some great ideas, and I think we can work with the community to really build some really great concepts that we can revision what MTI is all about. And then make sure that we are working with our partners to really look at, what are the national trends? What are the things that we're seeing out there that are going to help our students be most successful in the future as we move forward? Turn it over now to questions.
Board, question, Mr. R.
Oh, boy. Hope you paid the babysitter. I have a lot to put out there because career and technical education is the reason why I got into education at the high school level in 1997. So this is certainly my passion. And I've witnessed a lot of the changes, including 2005 and MTI. And I'd like to start by first sharing that it's important to reassure the public and the parents especially of students at MTI that regardless of whether we decide to keep MTI open or not, there is plenty of room. A few years ago, the whole portable city by Hillcrest that had a lot of employees there were all moved to MTI. And there was plenty of room for them and MTI continued. And I think that that's important for the public to hear because concurrently, we're trying to figure out as employees where we should eventually be housed, ideally so we have a boardroom bigger than a shoebox, which is also one of my passions. So I just wanted to put that out there. Second thing is, is that I believe the district has done a great job partnering with the CEP and local businesses. It's also really important to include the families and our citizens. So before we, as we continue to take steps, I would like to see more outreach, you know, and Mr. Ayers knows I'm a huge fan of surveys, but, you know, you have to ask. And so that would be one of my asks. Also, just because a program is expensive within reason, it doesn't mean that it doesn't serve a need and meet a need because we're here to do what's best for each and every child. And I think about Hillcrest School, it certainly is very expensive to run, and according to the FISH report, you know, we could pack a lot more kids into each of those classrooms, but we know in reality what our kids need. So there's that. And I know as a board member, I have to always focus on being fiscally responsible, and if, you know, 750 people wanted a million and a half dollars, you know, deficit every year, then our budget would be eaten up quickly. So I do get that with my school board member hat. Thirdly, as far as current and future enrollment projections for duplicated programs, that's what I would like to see because if you're going to move kids to a duplicated program, but then that program doesn't make, then what do you do with the kids? Do you move them yet somewhere else? And with ESE, we see that happen all the time with those specialized programs, you know, the self-contained classes get moved to different schools, and it's so hard on the parents and so hard on the kids. And that's why they love finally landing at Hillcrest because they get to be there from age 11 till they age out at 22. It's like, okay, I'm in a spot now and we're good to go. So there's that continuity. We have offered the program at MTI for 16 years, so I think that's also important for the community to hear again, that this isn't just some fly-by-night program that we did for three years and said, oh, we don't like it anymore. Our community is growing and changing, so it's good to have this conversation. I remember, and this is why I left the classroom, when our vocational programs were basically stopped for the most part, largely at our base schools. And it was because of FCAT and our kids that had always been disenfranchised from academics suddenly really had no reason to want to be in school. They were stuck in the hamster wheel of intensive math, intensive reading. Teachers were being forced to teach those courses when they were ag experts. It was just a mess. So I am so glad, you know, that MTI was born. My beef with MTI back then was no transportation was offered, even for kids with IEPs. So I'm not sure how we got away with that legally, but that was then, this is now. We have done an amazing job. I have not heard a complaint really from one parent about our high-level academics programs, you know, the Jones, the Madison Street. Madison Street is Performing Arts and Sciences, right? Okay. So there's a precedence there for starting that academic focus very young. And all kids need to have an academic focus, I get that. However, we're talking about high school kids finally being able to focus on their passion, their vocational career passion. In my mind, and maybe this is outside the box, but those of you that know me aren't surprised, in my mind, that needs to start in elementary school. Because we lose kids so young, and then they can never make it up, and then they get disenfranchised, and we know what they're doing. We see the results all over the news. So it gets me thinking and getting excited about, you know, we have high-level academics, the flow, you know, Jones, Madison Street, Howard, Vanguard IB, Forest, Bellevue, you know, Lake Weir High School. We've got that down. And I think that we could put our kids academically against any other kids in the country, you know, and our numbers prove that, where they get accepted to colleges and things like that. And I was really glad to hear you say that college-bound, military, career, and technical education are not mutually exclusive. You may decide that what you want to do is sweat on a roof, and there's plenty of jobs for that, but at some point, you may want to become the owner of that company, and you may need some more education. So it is a blend. And I would love to see some attention on, we've got Evergreen, you know, right out there. Maybe that could be our elementary, instead of Arts and Sciences, elementary, you know, okay, you follow me? So there's a lot to consider here, and I consider it to be really, really exciting. But whatever we end up doing, the kids that are at MTI now, and this, nothing's going to happen until next year, but some kids have really found their niche there. You know, they're happy and they're learning and they're not in trouble for the first time maybe in a long time. Or they've just found their passion and they've never struggled, you know? But they really do need to be prioritized in whatever program, and I'm interested to know that that will be for sure and that transportation will be provided. So other than that, that's all I have.
Great, thank you, Ms. R.
Thank you, Ms. R. Any other board members? Mr. Brown?
Yes, well, Board Member Thore, you bring up some really great points, especially entrepreneurial opportunities in the world and quality of education, not necessarily, if we're Paducah, Kentucky, not to throw off on any one place, but, you know, the world is our oyster, and that's really what we're doing, is we're educating people to go out and live in the world and, from my perspective, be entrepreneurs, free enterprise, that's the key. I hate the idea of limiting at an early stage. And so, you know, like blue collar, whatever, blue collar ultimately becomes a awesome white collar or any other collar you want as you hit millionaire status, multimillionaire status like that and moving on. And there's just so much opportunity out there. And you never have to go back exactly for math or any of these things because you get an education early on, even though you may not shine at that stage, you know, in reading, writing, arithmetic, but you get it, the passion of the teachers. So what I'm leading up to is, I'd like a little bit more discussion from you all or a little direction. I'm having a conversation with the community. And advocate, like you were back in college in debate class, advocate from both of these positions, keeping it going, and then take a position, the student position. I get the fiscal side of it, we get that, we don't want to run something that's inappropriate or we're stewards of the community's money. But right now, the thing that really jumps out to me is the education. And it sounds, it sounds, and I'd like some direction on this, it sounds like we're getting high quality in individual schools that wasn't there back in the day when this was established. That's what I'm hearing. But I'd like you to address that because you all know, and this is probably 38 bullet points, and it's a big presentation, I have a hard time wrapping my head around it, and I've studied it and been briefed. So, and I'm just thinking about the community because everybody's talking about this. This is a big deal. This is a huge deal. So if you could, advocate on one side and advocate on the other of keeping it going, moving it, and transportation, the waste of time spent moving back and forth. And you touched on it just briefly, but I just, I need to hear some, and pretend like everybody in the community is listening to you.
Sure. So what I would tell you, Board Member Brown, is that we-
So what I would tell you, Board Member Brani, is that we have really good career and technical programs at all of our schools, including MTI. And I think that's been our success over the last decade or so is that we really have reemphasized our effort on making sure that we're providing multiple pathways for students, that we're not just focused on those college-bound students, but we really are providing students the choice to decide where they want to go. You know, maybe it's I want to get right out into the workforce with an industry certification, or maybe I want to extend that over to Marion Technical College and gain some post-secondary understanding, or maybe I want to further that at a community college or even onto a university. So we really want to make sure that we don't close any doors for students.
How do you feel about that? How do you feel? If that's your child, or if that's you, just go back in time, how do you feel? Could you get that? Is picking up the twenty percent of, and I'm just making up a number, twenty percent of extra travel time and applying that to education, quality of education, how do you feel?
So yes, I think we can. And so I think part of the way that we're proposing to look at doing that is partnering with school choice. And if we can rededicate some funds to expanding access to other high schools with transportation, we want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students, can we then use what we already have existing in our seven high schools to further learning for any student where they want to go? So for instance, I'm a student at Bellevue High School. I don't have automotive here, but I really want to take automotive. Could I get transportation to Vanguard High School and be able to take classes there and spend my day there in the automotive program, doing the courses I want without having to split my time between two campuses like many of our students are doing right now?
Hypothetically, could you describe how that might work? That scenario you just spoke to, how would that work? Would it be every day, a part of a day, or three days a week? Or how, I know you can't write the curriculum, but...
I mean, ideally, it would work very similar to how we do school choice right now, right? So if I want to be a part of the MECA program at Westport and attend for the arts, even if that's not my zone school, I can apply, be accepted into that program. And then I stay there all day. We don't provide a lot of transportation right now for all of our magnet programs just because we have so many. But if we had the funds available, we could certainly look to build in more hub stops and more access to some of these programs that we're trying to grow where we do have a lot of room for growth, which we do. And Mr. Harris and I have had a lot of conversation about some of those programs that we'd like to grow. So that is an opportunity for students. So they would not spend part of their time at one place or the other, or one day or another. I would leave Bellevue as my base school and I would become a full-time student at Vanguard if that was my choice. And I would complete all four of my years of my education at Vanguard High School every day of the week.
Wow. And you would be, your transportation would be provided in the scenario you're alluding to?
If we can dedicate the funds to it and build in the hub stops, absolutely. We could provide transportation.
And we're already doing that actually because our youngest did the MECA program at Westport and he was zone for Forest. And he was a, we were, you know, as parents, we took him to the hub stop, but that was a lot closer than hauling him to Westport. And then when he got old enough, you know, he was able to ride with friends and, you know, all of that.
Correct.
Pulled the license over his head.
Just because of the geographic size of our district. Ms. Roar can talk more eloquently than I could about that, but you know, if we're trying to get somebody from Fort McCoy to Westport, when we could run three thousand different bus routes all crisscrossing Marion County trying to get kids, but creating a hub, here's a location, if you want to go to Westport, this is the closest location. Get your kid there at this time and we'll take them the rest of the way.
And the exciting thing in this new world, much of the funding and governmental funding goes into the stock market, goes into bonds and stocks. And one of the leaders in that, and probably one of the leaders in the world will be this electronic transportation world, this Tesla thing, Tesla company. And I bring them up as compared to legacy companies. And it's incredible that there are millionaires working side by side. These are people that we're talking about right here that were students. And they're working side by side with individuals and these are very flat organizations. And putting a child through your program, that's why I'm asking, like the quality of the education on a world-class level, boom, you know, you have the world as your oyster and you can go out there and you can have the person, it might be a factory job, you're a millionaire. And you're a multimillionaire, you're a multimillionaire, they're getting paid in stock and that type of thing. So that education really matters. And then you go wherever in the world you go, NASA, whatever, whatever you're going to do. And that's what I'm looking for. So advocate that way. Mr. Kelly, a great background in education, what have you, that's what I'm looking for so I can have this conversation with confidence that ten years from now, we're very, very excited and proud of the decision we're making maybe this year and next year.
Want to address a couple of bullet points that are of those thirty-eight?
Yes.
I would advocate for having programs in a larger school for the reason of opportunity within the school. We think that vocational programs sometimes are those students that are just going to work. That's kind of the image that's out there. When every single person that is in our high school right now is getting ready to go to work at some point, they may have a path that takes them through years of college to do that, but they are all going to go to work. And CTE is where we teach them those habits of work. We can teach the student who is going straight to work, you know, but we're also teaching the student that's in a high-level ACE or IB class. So we need the availability of coursework in schools. At a school like MTI where there's a couple hundred students, we struggle with a very small number of teachers to teach ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade and not even getting into honors and different kinds of things. So we limit what we can do. If we go to a larger school, now I can have ACE students, I can have ESE students, I can have everything in between in those CTE classes, learning about that profession, preparing to go to work or go to college. So by having numbers that helps you in your school to be able to offer more and to put all those students together to learn. So I think that's a large benefit of being able to go back to a high school. Again, we forget that we teach kids how to go out into the workforce. It would be impossible for Marion County schools to offer courses in every job that's available, you know? There's thousands of jobs. I learn about jobs every single day that I didn't know existed yesterday. And most of them go, wow, I could have done that, you know? I didn't know about it, you know? It's a little late now.
Never too late.
So, you know, we forget that we're trying to educate all those kids about soft skills, about work habits, all the things that businesses are really telling me that they want. And quite frankly, they're not as concerned about the certifications that they get and the end result of education. They're, can they get here on time? Can they be respectful? Can they be responsible? You know, are they willing to learn? Are they willing to be a team player? All of those things is what they really want.
And have they learned to learn?
Right. And that's what we teach in CTE. And I'm going to leave with one great example, Bellevue High School, been doing this for a long time and I was at Bellevue High School before, you know, here. The Senior Project at Bellevue High School is a great example of, you know, we encouraged every student at Bellevue High School to be in a CTE program. I don't care if you're an ACE students, I want you in a CTE program because eventually you're going to work, right? I don't even care if it's what you're going to do with the rest of your life. If you think you're going to be a doctor and you're taking ag right now, great, you're learning something, you know, about the workforce. But the Senior Project is in their senior year of learning about what they want to do with their life, hopefully tied into the career field that they're in, you know, the programs that they're taking. But they research all year long, they go on ride-alongs, they job shadow, they do all these things. And at the end of the school year, they have to do a presentation. It's your term paper kind of speak, most of them hate it, all right? But we get individuals from the outside, we get professionals from the fields that these students think they want to go into and they have to present to them. And they present their, you know, what their findings are. When they walk away from that, it's the best thing that they think ever happened, you know? But that's what CTE can do, is get them ready for that. And that's what a large school of IB kids, ACE kids, ESE kids and everything in between gets an opportunity to do that. So, you know, that would be my pitch of how do we make this better in our schools? It's happening and we can do better. I know there's parents out there that want small school, you know? It's hard to offer a small school. We see by the PowerPoint here, small schools are hard to operate because of money sometimes, although we can't choose to spend the money. It is a good cause, right? But I'm telling you also that it's hard to operate because of course offerings, we can't offer everything because we don't have the volume there to do that, right? So, you know, in the high schools, what can be done, which I've been a part of in the past, is building academies within the schools, school within the schools, so that you can make small groups. You can make, you know, we've done this, my agriculture program who had a dedicated math, English, science, social studies teacher to the ag program, so everything was together. So when we learned English and we learned math, we learned about ag English and ag math and, you know, which really followed all the frameworks, everything we're supposed to do, but is relevant to the students. And let's face it, y'all, we've got to have things that students are interested in to get them to school. We can teach them when they get there, but we have to have the interest to get them there. And that's what, that's much what CTE or the arts or anything that are these special programs, the magnets we have, that's what gets them to school so that we can get them to the next level.
Could you elaborate? You touched on the high school, the qualified high school. Go with this program, a school in a school, go through a hypothetical for me, don't have to get too detailed, of what the student would see in a day staying in one location and not in transportation. What would it be like from academic through this specialty scenario? And then tell me what a CTE is, so that, tell the world what a CTE is.
Career technical education.
Okay, thank you.
What old people think of as vocational classes, we now are into career technical education.
Thank you very much.
I include myself because I say vocational all the time and that's just being old. I can give you a lot of detail, probably don't want to do it all here because I've, my career has been building academies. I've built a whole school in the villages of academies and that's all it, and it still is down there. Built them at Lakewood High School a little bit years ago, built them at Bellevue High School. And I've learned lessons along the way where I used to think we wanted an academy of TV productions, right? The issue is, it's the same thing as what we're battling right now, talking about MTI. When you get small groups, you limit your opportunity, all right? So if I just wanted to do TV productions and have some teachers dedicated there, the opportunity is not as great as if I broaden that. So what we've learned over the years at Bellevue, five years ago, we instituted three different academies and we grouped different vocational CTE programs together in those three academies so that I had five hundred students in each academy, all right? So within that academy, it was a small school. We had our own math, English, science, social studies and our CTE teachers. They planned together, they planned curriculum, cross-curriculum, they integrated curriculum so that we're teaching math in the ag class and, you know, vice versa. So it really just becomes a small school of five hundred that you can offer more to and not get it so small that you can't offer to all students. But it became really just its own school. Course offerings weren't different. We offered the same courses, right? But they were just in a smaller club and they had a, they all had a common interest when they were in that small group.
And so you're, I love your advocacy. And for anyone that doesn't know this man, I just want to, I want to highlight, also has embraced the community and he's done it out in the civilian world with Kiwanis, for example, for one. And it's hugely beneficial to everyone he associates with. I mean, he really does. So I just throw a congratulations at you.
Thanks, sir.
The academic part is what you do for a living. The rest of it I know is a passion and we all benefit from it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brani. Ms. Campbell?
So there, while you're standing there, Mr. Kelly, and I was, I'm sitting here thinking you wanted to hear both sides. So we heard a lot of one side and we've heard portions of the other side. And some of what Ms. Thrower has said also, I'm big on surveys, I want to know what people are thinking out there. The one question that I have of our current students who are at MTI, and I've shared this with you gentlemen when we met, was why have they chosen that school? And I think if we got to the heart of that, why have they chosen MTI? Is it because their program that they wanted isn't in their base school? Is it because the program that they wanted wasn't their base school, but they actually wanted it to end at somewhere else? Because we have some of these, let's say, information technology, maybe their base school is Westport, but they really wanted to go to the one at Vanguard. They really want, and, but for whatever reason Vanguard's was full and that's not an open enrollment for that school choice, et cetera, et cetera. So why have they chosen to be at MTI? And we don't know that information yet, so we'll start with that because I don't think that we've actually done that survey of those students and parents. But focusing on that seventy-eight full-time students, it's possible that those students have chosen because they don't want to be in a charter school, they don't want to be in a private school for whatever reason, they want to be a public school student, but they still thrive in a smaller environment. And so when speaking with you gentlemen, I know we had this conversation, and I don't know if this is something that we want to discuss or elaborate on, but there was a conversation potentially about even if that cohort of students wanted to take some classes in Marion Virtual School and we had a classroom dedicated or a couple of classrooms for Marion Virtual Classes for those students at Marion Technical College, they could potentially get whatever there, if we already have it at Marion Technical, what's one we have there, culinary, culinary was an easy one. I'm like, what, that's the first one that jumped out. If they wanted to be in the culinary program and stay in a cohort, potentially we could still keep that small school. I think the main thing, what I want to say for parents who are questioning, concerned about this, is that we're not leaving kids high and dry and we're going to be offering opportunities and choices even more so than what we have in the past. And I think it's an opportunity for us to get more creative whenever, and going back, I appreciate the history, Mr. Whitehouse, I really do. And I remember when MTI opened, I moved here, hadn't been here very long, but I remember when it opened and I remember all the excitement and the energy and I remember thinking, what's the big deal? I mean, I had only lived in Marion County three or four years, like what's the big deal? Why, why is there even a need for this? Not understanding that vocation had completely left our high schools. We didn't have, I mean, not completely, excuse me, had gone in several high schools and the focus had shifted. And so we needed to have a revision, a re-envisioning of career and technical education. And so that became MTI out of engage in education and some of those things that were happening back then with the business community. And so having that history, I think, is important, knowing that it has been that long, fifteen, sixteen years that MTI. So for those who are like, well, if you would promote it better, well, it's been here for fifteen or sixteen years. So there's some dialogue out there that I want people to understand that it's been there. Trust me, the business community is very aware of MTI. I've had folks in the construction industry that only know about MTI and have no idea about the Construction Academy at Lakewood High School. And so there's, trust me, the business community is very aware and wanting to pull students from there. But as someone who hasn't grown up in Marion County, I am certainly passionate about ensuring that we have the most opportunities on our base school campuses as possible. I appreciate Ms. Thrower's idea of ensuring that our youngest learners are also getting exposed to that. And not even just exposure, our STEAM magnet programs and focusing on STEAM certainly can do that, STEAM with science, technology, engineering, arts and math. Those can focus on that, but actually having the real connection between, and if you do this, whenever you, you know, if you really like this, then maybe you want to take this when you get to middle school, or maybe you want to take this when you get to high school, and sharing that in those kindergarten and second, fifth grade classes, you know, if you're really passionate about this, let's talk about what this could look like for you. And really, and maybe our teachers are doing that right now, but even having that stronger connection, I know that we've done a lot of work of ensuring that there is that connection of the pipeline of the schools from elementary and the pipeline to middle and the pipeline to, now that's kind of a newer thing that we're doing lately, but even having that from the CTE perspective as well. I envision, if we go this route, of not just moving these students to our existing programs, but potentially offering... programs, but potentially offering these programs that we already offer that are so popular, like welding, as we discussed, on another campus. Can we go ahead and have two welding programs? Can we have six culinary programs? Can we, the very, very popular programs that we have, I don't think that it limits us right now. We have kind of been limited because MTI was the option. If we don't have welding at, and you're not zoned for Dunell, you can't get into Dunell, then you can get transportation to MTI, so that's where you're going to go. But if we focus more on spreading the wealth per se and getting programs on base school campuses where it opens that opportunity up to those students more, they may not know that they have a welding interest at Vanguard. They may not have any idea that they care about culinary at North Marion. They may not know that they would, but if they had the opportunity to take those courses, then it opens up that thought to it. So I'm also all in favor of expanding access with transportation, however that can look for as many students as possible. I had a parent reach out to me this summer who had chosen the CCAP program at Forest for her child. She was in Marion Oaks, didn't have any, well, unbeknownst to her, transportation was going to be a challenge. That's on her, that's on the parent, because certainly we know, I know that it definitely tells in Mr. Ayers when you're filling out, transportation's on you, basically, if you choose this program. However, that was a challenge for this parent. I would like to say, let's not make that a challenge. If a student wants to attend a program in a school, let's figure out how we can expand these hub stops and get kids where they want to be. And if we have a transportation allocation where we're looking at a red number right now that says a million dollars, can we push some of that money to ensuring that our kids can get to the programs they want to attend, wherever that might be? Additionally, expanding programs in as many locations as we can, including in our middle schools and elementary schools. And thank you for mentioning Capstone at Bellevue High School. I was a judge last year, loved those Capstone projects. Those really, really are great. I hope they do them everywhere else, but if they don't, they really should think about it. That's it.
I want to address one number for you right there. You're talking about the number of students that are at the base school that don't have programs and did some little research yesterday on that. 14% of the students at MTI have the program at their base school. Okay? So they had the program, but they chose to come to MTI anyway. So I'm going to make an assumption here, that by the way, is 26 students. All right? So I'm going to make the assumption, those 26 students like the smaller school. It's not because they couldn't get the program at their base school, it's they wanted something else. You know, and I will tell you, we will talk to those 26 parents and any more that we find through a survey of what can we work out to give you those things. I think dual enrollment is going to be a great possibility. It's going to look a lot like some of the things they're doing right now, to tell you the truth. And that may be what they're looking for. I think pairing it with virtual is a great idea if they have the capability of taking a virtual class and coming the other half of the day into MTC or, you know, I think it's a great possibility. But we will work through those 26, if that's the number, parents to see what we can do.
Thank you.
Ms. King, you have anything?
Yeah, we've had some really great conversation this morning and I appreciate hearing everyone's views on that. I heard a lot of good, positive things such as revision, retool, potential opportunity, and I see that too. And I appreciate that the board and the leadership of the superintendent 15 years ago saw the need then of Marion County. And I also appreciate that the leadership that's here now in this board also sees the opportunity to, as Mr. Whitehouse all the time says, maybe we need to retool. We need to stop, look what's working, what's not, and navigate, you know, pivot, whatever word we need to use to, just because something has been away for 15 years doesn't mean that it's right and good for us anymore. And Mr. Browning, you hit on some excellent points about world-class education and understanding how we could identify these areas and teach our students a lot of good skills and learning how to learn and stuff by doing things the right way. And that excites me when I hear that a lot. Something else that was really important is you hit on, you caught on transportation, but that's, in the teacher world, that could be like transition time. And when you think about if they're on a bus an hour a day or that time traveling, that's minutes in time out of their day that they're not getting that education. And that was, that really spoke to me and that was addressed. And I can, when I see what I've seen today and I've spoke with you guys a couple of days, I see the strengths and the positives of this. And I am not uncomfortable, keep doing one thing that, you know, we've done in the past if it's time to reevaluate and move forward. And, you know, what was coming out to me is I was thinking about Who Moved My Cheese? You know, that book? People are never comfortable when their cheese is being moved and that's what we're doing right now. And, but they also find that when their cheese is moved, it's, could often be better. And I appreciate that. And like you talked about Tesla and stuff, there are so many, our world's changing constantly. And I, and when people or businesses think of Marion County Public Schools, I want them to be like, I want those students. You know, I don't want to hear that they're late or they don't know, you know, how to, whatever it is that may be going on. I want them to be like, Marion County Public School students, we want them. And I think we could do that. And so that's where I stand with that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hold on. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes.
Do you have anything to say concerning this?
Well, I was anxious to hear from the rest of the board. I think our team has done a phenomenal job and I appreciate your asking these great questions. I think we are on the verge of absolute greatness in this district. I am incredibly proud that as a team that we have these conversations transparently with the public. I've talked to a lot of folks in the community, in the business, roundtables and CEP and parents. And I think it requires us to step forward and be honest about what do we do that's best for our children? What do we do that's best for our students and their future? So I look forward to hearing from the board about what you would like to see happen. We will make it happen. And I can tell you that I'm committed and the entire team is committed to doing what's best for students. And often that requires us to have bold conversations. What's working, what's not working? And be honest about shifts that need to occur so that we're thinking forward for their future. I think the opportunity exists for us to have a bright new future, to be current with the changing landscape that we're facing as a community and a nation internationally. I had a conversation some time ago with the CEP about entrepreneurialship, which is why we've added that entrepreneurial lens to our strategic plan and thinking differently about equipping our students with the skills that they need. And so we will make it happen, whatever is best for our students is what we will do. I also want to say, we're not in a hurry to do anything because we're, sometimes we have to go slow to go fast, but we also, we also have a requirement to do our due diligence and to stand up for our kids that don't have the voice.
Thank you. That's where I'm at with this. That's where I'm at with this. I understand that there are things that need to be retooled and rebranded, specifically rebranded. We've been doing certain things with it too long and the same way, we're not getting a good return on investment. But I do have concerns that if you move too fast sometimes, when you move fast, you actually make mistakes because you move so fast without thinking everything out and doing the due diligence. The things that I have concern of is, we just talked, we just came from this conference last week about student outcome, student outcome. That was the biggest thing that we talked about last week. We have to make sure that however we are doing this process, whatever we're going to do in this rebranding, because that's the word that you said, you said rebrand and you said pause, you didn't say stop. Am I correct? Y'all shaking your head? Say yes. Okay. Y'all said pause, you didn't say stop. So, and rebrand and retool and repurpose. So with that, the focus has to be student outcome. What's going to happen to these students? What, are we doing what's best for us or are we doing what's best for the students? And if we're going to do what's best for the students, we have to make sure that they are getting the same equity and accessibility to the programs that they have had all the time. Mr. Kelly just said something. He said that there were about 26 students that had some of these programs at their school, but still chose to go to MTI. And the question is, what is that something else? Why did they choose to go there? Obviously, there was something there, there is something there, not was, there is something there that attracts this group or this cohort of kids to this program. So we need to figure that out in our moving forward. What is it that we're not giving them at their base school, that they left their base school to come to this school? Are y'all with me?
Absolutely.
Because that's, that's going to, that's going to, that's the only way that the programs that you're talking about, putting in these base schools are going to be successful if we know what that something else is. And if we don't know what that something else is, we're going to be in the same spot again. I do have some other issues as far as, we're talking about creating some hub stops and some transportation things. We ain't got transportation right yet. So how you going to talk about hub stops and all that kind of stuff? And we haven't got it right yet for this semester. Are y'all understanding where? Is something going to have to really drastically change to do that? And then I'm concerned about two particular areas there at MTI. We have the ESE Work Study Program. Where are those kids going to be displaced to? How are we going to deal with those kids? Because those are, those are some of our most vulnerable people and we have to take care of them.
They talked about it.
Yeah.
They said they were going to leave them.
I can address that if you'd like.
You're going to leave them there?
Yes, sir. They are on campus right now. They're using a couple of classrooms and a couple of portables. There could be even more portables available, but we want to leave them in place.
Okay.
They're not going to be disturbed being there. They have a program, they have a supervisor there.
Okay.
So.
Right, because you have all the ESE services that's right there on that campus. I just can't see displacing those kids.
We want to leave those in, as long as we own that piece of property, we want to keep them.
And then we have some, we have a daycare there as well, correct?
Correct.
Staying there too.
Would like to keep that there also.
Y'all didn't say that, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, the YPP program.
No, the YPP is not the same thing as a daycare program. It's two different things. And that's what, that's what, if we're going to be transparent with the public, let's be completely transparent with the public. The YPP program and the daycare is two separate programs. Because we have a certified childcare program that was certified by DCF. Am I correct, Superintendent?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm looking to confirm since I wasn't here at the inception.
We have, we have DCF certified daycare program. We currently have our early childhood ed students that are at MTI
Correct.
in that building that help run and that's where they learn is through that daycare program. If we did not have students, the MTI students on that campus, we would like to continue with the daycare program and build it even bigger. We checked yesterday, I think we can run between 50 and 60
60 kids.
kids in that facility. So that would be a great opportunity for many things to happen.
So that's an under.
They're there now though. How many students?
Fifteen, or 15 little, 15 little ones are there now.
Right. Not, because the perception is that the community thinks that there's only three kids in that building and there's not. There is a
One baby.
Exactly, there's.
Yeah, our YPP program that operates there has three students and one baby right now, two on the way.
Right.
But
The daycare has.
daycare students.
Right, right, right. So those things I want to be clear.
YPP and daycare.
You might go over that, would you go over that again, Mr. Kelly? The difference?
We have YPP, which is Young Parent Program, that we have expecting mothers or mothers that have had a child recently that can come to that facility. We teach them their classes, their core classes there and some life skills and parenting classes there. And those are the ones that have three students. That is in the building, what we know as Building 24, most of us on the campus there at MTI. I think most everybody knows where it was. If we had a picture, I could point to it.
Mr. Kelly, for clarification, three students that are three moms?
Three moms.
Yes, that are students.
That are students. They have one baby that is there right now.
Yeah.
And two that are coming after the first of the year. Okay? So that is one program that's in that building. Also existing in that building is MTI has an early childhood ed class in there that students can come from around the county. We also offer that one at Dunell and High School.
Right.
Right? So they can come there for that program, same way as all our other programs, AM PM or full-time, they can be there. Right? For them to have a lab to work with, we offer a daycare
Correct.
which has 15 little guys, three, four and five years old in it that are open, that we charge parents to come there at a very discounted rate that pays for operation, really, so that our students can learn with those little ones.
Yeah. And that's, that's what I'm saying. So I'm, I want us to, I want us to do whatever we can to help rebrand, retool, repurpose MTI. I'm understanding that. And I want us to be fiscally responsible in how we do it. But my main concern is going to be about student outcome. Not just some students, every student outcome, that they have the most productive student outcome, most successful student outcome going forward, whether they get, go back to a base school, whatever they do, whether they stay in the choice program. It has to be about, our business has to be about the students, student outcome. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, and with that, I really like the idea of the reassurance of keeping our older, everybody's just used to the term ESE, students at, on the MTI campus because it's very close to the job opportunities, you know, all up and down Highway 40, you know, there's access there. And so I think that that's smart and good for kids. Also, the Building 24 that we've been talking about with the child, different childcare programs, previous boards, just a few years ago, made quite an investment
Correct.
in that building. I think it was close to a million dollars
Very close.
when it was all said and done. And it is designed for little tiny kids.
Yes.
Right? So to retrofit it for anything else.
We could not move back in that building without major renovation again for adults. We could not go back in with adults.
Right, like even the toilets are short.
Very.
Okay. You know, it gets down to basics.
Made for a three-year-old.
Right, right. So yes, it is. Well, it's expensive too to retrofit.
Right.
And if we're, we got the map back up here, bottom left-hand side of this picture, you see a bunch of portables and there's kind of a building that has some angled sides to it that's square there, that's Building 24.
Right.
Right, right. So anything that can be done in terms of a public-private partnership to build up that program in that beautiful building
Correct.
would be a benefit to the, to our students because there's a lot of opportunity there for them and for the community. The only other thing I had, I was thinking about this blending of career and technical education and what that can lead to. You know, hopefully, everybody's life is long enough where they may not stay in the actual, they may stay in the field, but not in that same exact job. They'll work their way up. So I hope that we can look at doing some kind of paid internshipping with our local community businesses because, you know, kids need money and money is attractive and, and it would get them out there and hopefully meet a need too in our community because our employment, you know, they're crying for employees, good employees. So I really love the internship concept. And then my last thing is, is that when I think about the military, you know, you can start out in an ROTC program and maybe your goal is to be in infantry. But then, over time, because you've been in that program, then maybe your goal is to get accepted to West Point. And so you, you can be either in the field or doing something very different than what you thought you were going into that program for. So I think that that's really important for the community to know that we're not trying to typecast kids or steer kids. What we're trying to do is assist them, you know, and that if you have a passion in something you're already really interested in, not everyone is this well-rounded individual that's the all-American. Some people have very targeted and focused interests and I think that's where the 26 students come from. I went to a huge high school, Cleveland Heights High. I mean, it had everything, but it didn't have horses. So guess where I went for college? I went to Lakewood College for Women because they had an equestrian studies program and I've done okay. So that's really serving every child because they had an OJT program. And I was able to go and get paid and leave, you know, I had all my credits, so for my elective credits, I drove to the farm and never looked back. So there's lots of ways for kids, anyone, to be successful. So this has been a great conversation.
Bye, Chair.
So at, at this point, I'm sure you're looking for consensus of some kind out of, after the board to, how to move forward. I'm, I'm curious to know where we stand, frankly, because I, I think I've kind of heard two different things. Because while, if you go back to Slide Seven, while it says pause programs and plan for new vision, it also says provide school choice options for current students. And that does not mean
Pause.
rebranding and going out and trying to sell MTI the new vision of the rebrand to try to enhance and bring in more students. And so I, I, I wanna ensure that we understand what we're trying to give them direction on, and, and I think that there's a little bit of a disconnect right now.
Mr. Kelly or Mr. A, can you just talk about that a little bit, how that would look, like to provide the school choice options?
Sure. Do we wanna talk about the, the dichotomy of those two bullet points, or we wanna talk about the, I can address both?
What, whatever your most, well, it's Ms. King's question. I'm not certain.
Sure. So I mean, to the original point, our, our recommendation is that we want to look at how do we create innovative new programs that aren't available other places? And we pointed out there's a lot of duplication of programs, and that hurts a lot of our enrollment because they can't take those courses so many other places. So we really wanna find where are those places in the community that we need to fill a need, that we can do so by rebranding and retooling what we're doing at Marion Technical Institute? So back to your question.
So for our, the, the current students, I'm curious about the current students that are MTI right now, how will that look for them if we decide to move forward?
Yes, so we would, we'd have to really give them choices, and they'd have to decide what it is that they wanna do. And some of them that are freshmen there may have decided, you know what, I'm, I started off in, in culinary, and I really don't like it anymore, and I wanna go somewhere else. So some of the juniors that are there have been in culinary for all three years, and they want to finish that out. So we'll really have to look at how do we provide options for each of those students to fulfill that need. So for the student that wants to finish out culinary their senior year, they've got several choices. One, we've got four different high schools that offer culinary that we can provide choice options through Mr. Ayers' office for them to select to go to that base, that as their new school and finish out. Or we can look at dual enrollment options with MTC for their culinary program and have that student go and finish out their school in a dual enrollment option through MTC. So it's really gonna depend on the student and where their career aspirations are. But we would make sure that any student that started a program that wants to finish, that we have a way for them to finish that program.
Okay, that's clear.
Oh.
And that would be it. So let's say it, it is culinary, since you use culinary. Let's say that their, maybe this is Mr. Ayers' question. Let's say that their zone school is, I don't know,
We would.
Dunellen, but they wanna go to the one at Forest.
The conversation that we've had, you know, the preliminary conversation that we had is we would treat these students individually.
Okay.
So when we say through the choice options program, it would not necessarily mean, all right, you're now thrown in with everybody else in a choice options. We would utilize our school choice program, but treat each individual student. So we would have individual conversations with these individual students and their families to find out what will work best for you, and then we'll make that work.
So basically, you're gonna be kinda doing like what we did with Francis Mary.
I, I, I'm, I'm
You didn't wanna say that.
But, but.
I said it. I said it.
But yes, we would, we would, because understanding everything that, that's going on here, you know, the students are first, and the families are first, and we need to make sure some of this is going to be painful for some people because of things that they had, but we're going to work individually with each student and family, not through our normal, you know, avenues of school choice, but through individualized students, what works best for that family, to make that work. Since basically, you know, we would be closing their program, and then so they, that's why they wouldn't necessarily be in the normal thing. We would work individually with each family.
Now, I have a concern with this, and I'm, Mr. Brown, I promise I'll come into you. I have a concern when you have a program where that one program is at one school in this district and is not at multiple schools about equity for those kids, accessibility to those programs. If you have a kid, you're telling me that we have, and you, and you keep saying hubs and all that kind of stuff. But Dunellen, for instance, has the welding program. It's the only one in the county. So potentially, you could have a kid whose base school is Lake Ware, and you're gonna transport him all the way or her, all the way across county to Dunellen. How is that gonna be done when we're having these transportation issues?
I'll, I'll jump in there, best coming. So back to Ms. Campbell's point, one of the things that we are really looking at now is return investment of all of our programs across the district. And if there's a need for us to have welding in more than one location, then let's make that happen.
I agree.
But I think the immediate address to that question is, we do offer welding at MTC. And we can explore dual enrollment options for those students to be able to get them to MTC, which is only halfway across town, so all the way to the other side of Marion County, and get them into that welding program where they can then move out into the workforce right away.
But my, my, my question is, is it gonna be equitable as far as the type of program that moved? MTC, MTC's welding program is probably a little bit more to the advanced level, I'm thinking, than the high school one. Am I?
Correct, but the, certainly what we would look at doing is, when we get a chance to really figure out where students wanna go, could we offer a specific high school course of welding, not just sprinkling, you know, seventeen-year-old kids in with all the adults that are doing welding? But if we can get a handful of students that are interested in going to MTC for dual enrollment, we can dedicate a specific time that they will only teach high school students and make that their program, that they could dual enroll in that program, which is very similar to what CF does, right? When we do dual enrollment with CF, they build courses with us, some of them on our campus and some of them at CF, where they really dedicate, because of our numbers of students going there, they dedicate them to be really pure for high school students.
My thing is with the whole thing, I just want us to, again, as we're moving forward with this decision and with, again, having student outcome as our forefront, that we are making sure that we're putting our kids in the best position to succeed. That we're putting them in the best position that they will be successful in whichever vocation or CTE or however you wanna call it. I'm in the vocation age bracket, Mike. I'm with you. We're in the vocation age, when they had shop and all that crap, stuff. I'm in that, I'm in that, I'm in that age bracket, so I wanna make sure that they are successful in whatever it is that they're going to, and that they're not gonna get to this new place, and it's, it's a culture shock to them. Because again, that question is, what is the something else? If they went to MTI, there was a something else that prevented them from taking that program at their base school. Let me get Mr. Brown, because you're, you're chomping at the bit right now.
Well, no, thank you. Really, everyone has, this is just beautiful. This is just beautiful. Because there's a, there's so much discussion that it's enlightening to the community and to those students who are in the community. I, I wanna go back and, 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 and I have been sort of hanging, but you've been answering, it's almost a mental telepathy. I don't know exactly how you're doing it, but you're doing it, and, and so I'm gonna tie into some of those thoughts. But the, the idea of Ms. King talking about going off into the world and then coming back, you know, some, sometimes we say, oh, we need to hold the people here. I left for the service in, from Hickman Mills, Missouri. Well, they're fighting to keep people in Hickman Mills, Missouri. But let me tell you, I then spent years in California, years in Tokyo, you know, and then I came back. And whenever you come back, you bring money, you bring knowledge, you bring the whole world. And that's what I wanna send these students out with, and that's what I'm hearing here. And so then going, Ms. Campbell's comment about where are we? What are we, what are we endorsing? What are we saying? And, and the Superintendent talking, there's, all these conversations are blending for me, and slow is truly fast, is what you're, you're talking about here. So slow is fast. I'm writing down, we are not in a binary situation, and that's what I'm hearing from you all. We are not in a either-or binary situation. So wow, we can actually be flexible and deliver quality of education with a superintendent and with staff and with a board backing them up. We can deliver that. And that, to me, is incredibly exciting. And I don't wanna move too fast because two days ago, Mr. Chairman, you, or Reverend Chairman, you welcomed our single visitor to our, our session we had that day. Welcome. So glad you could come. Now, to me, that is everything. And so I wanna welcome, and this kind of discussion we're having welcomes all of those citizens out there and all of those students to this body. And we can embrace them and truly welcome them. And, and we have resources, and this is incredible to me, with the Superintendent, and then give you some power. Because this is just, wow. Have we opened the, opened all of the opportunity that we have to offer? And, and all these different ways to get to, I'll just call it a million dollars, you know, and now it's ten million. A million isn't what it used to be. So now ten million dollars, you know, these, these people can go out and really, really nail whatever it is they wanna nail. So I am just so excited. So thank you. It, it, it did not slow me up, me just isolated over here because it was so instructive. Thank you, sir.
Bye, Chair.
Chair Cummings makes a, a very great point. I, I have two que, I have a question, but then I also wanna reference a, a point he's making. When I'm looking at current programs at MTI and the student enrollment, welding is only on one campus right now, and there are forty-four students in that. How are we putting forty-four more students in the welding program at Dunellen? It's probably not gonna happen, frankly, and, and same thing with automotive. There are fifty-six students in automotive, and we offer that on two campuses. Now, that, both of those are expensive programs to offer, to build brand-new facilities on various campuses. I, I'm not saying I'm opposed to that because I, you've just heard me say, we need to offer more choice options on these campuses. But fifty-six students in automotive, we can't just put twenty-five more students in automotive at Vanguard and North Marion, and same thing with welding. So visioning for that, gentlemen?
Sure. So part of that is really gonna be, one, examining where those students are coming from. So yes, we see the numbers of the program, but a number of those are seniors, so they're gonna be gone next year, so that reduces the number. But then what we have to examine in those individual conversations is, what's the preference of those students? You know, could we get forty-four students over to Dunellen in their welding program? Probably so, but would they all want to go there from all parts of Marion County? We're not sure. But could we add welding elsewhere? Could we add it at another high school that where most of those students are coming from, that they could build that program there? Or could we partner with MTC and use that as a stopgap to, to develop some dual enrollment options? So I think, again, to Boardman Browning's point, we don't wanna pigeon ourselves into, you know, just a either-or. I think we really have to look at where's the need, you know, where do these students wanna go, where do future students wanna go? And then how do we build those programs and a variety of options to get the students to those programs they wanna attend?
But then my, my question is gonna go actually back to the slide again on the, on the third, third bullet now. Because while we're pausing programs, we're having new visioning, what I'm hearing and seeing is that the new academy concept is gonna be at MTC. So we're not necessarily talking about if we are to offer new, at least the way this is proposed, if we were to offer new career technical programs that we're currently not offering, I don't know what that might be, Body Shop or Small Engine Mechanics or something. Those are things we're not currently doing. So if we were to do those, we're talking about potentially not repurposing what we're doing in our classroom spaces at MTI, but actually offering those on the MTC campus.
And before you answer that.
That's what I'm asking.
I know. Before you answer, I want you to tread, tread
Right.
carefully on how you answer that, because just, go ahead.
I mean, but that's what that says.
You're absolutely right.
So I'm, I'm asking.
I think that one out before you answer that. Just shoot from the hip.
I think honestly, a lot of that's gonna come from conversation with the community, right? What, what's going to best serve the needs of our community moving forward? And maybe it is simply rebranding what we have, or maybe it is bringing what we have and creating new things under the umbrella of MTC. And I think that's where we have to really look at some of those hard choices and hard conversations of what's best for us to operate. You know, keep in mind, MTC has some courses that are already available on the MTI campus.
Right.
So I mean, we, we have opportunities to grow and expand under one umbrella instead of under two separate umbrellas. So we just have to be really thoughtful and in those conversations. So the short answer is, we haven't made up our mind because we really wanna make sure we're thoughtful. Well, and we wanna make sure we're thoughtful in those conversations and that we really are having slow conversations with the community. But before we went down that road, we wanna make sure that you're comfortable with going down that road.
Mr. Brown. And, and listen, we're gonna have to take a break. Because some, some of us are as young as we used to be. So let's, let's, let's do this. Let's do this. Let's do this. Let's take a break. Let's take a five, a seven-minute recess.
Mine's really quick.
After her question.
Okay. Okay. A, a suggestion, because we've made that major investment in Building Twenty-four, and we have, at least according to my slide, eighteen students in the early childhood education, I hope that we can take a long look at maintaining a program there because we've already made a major investment. So I don't see this as an either-or situation either. My second thing is, is that because this has opened up such a conversation and it is so important, I'll just put it on the record that I'm not ready to vote on anything like at the next board meeting. I think that we need to take and digest everything that we've talked about today, come back. I, I'm just not ready to vote. So with that, I'm ready to take a break.
Let's break. Seven minutes.
I like, I like what I just heard, so I'll just.
Meeting and recess, ten forty-four. as you just described. Now, that's with trusting that these are not code words that I'm agreeing to. Oh, oh, you said that? That means, in real parlance, it means this liberty? No. I'm saying, yes. I like the idea of the exploring. I like the efficiency. I like the stewardship, and I like the potential for improved scholarship and less wasted time in travel, when we can, in fact, procedurally be much more efficient. Any organization can. So as long as there's no code there, and now we can have that discussion out throughout the community and all, I'm very, very comfortable with what you just asked, and that is to be able to explore these potentials for, as I just outlined. Thank you. Mr. Whitehouse and Mr. Kelly, I think you probably have the consensus from us to explore. Again, that doesn't say you're doing anything other than exploring and having conversations. We do want to have that community input back, and we do want to know what the parents-- we want to know what the-- oftentimes, let me say this, and I'm going to get off my soapbox. Oftentimes, we always say we want to know what the parents say. We need to know what the students say as well, because they're the ones that's going to be directly affected. So we need to get their input in conjunction with the parents' input, and make sure that as we move forward with whatever we're going to do and how we're going to do it, that we proceed in such a way, again, that student outcome is first, the best student outcome is first, and that we're fiscally responsible, because that's going to be the other part that the community did, that the taxpayers demand, that we be fiscally responsible with how we move forward. And we have a budget that we have to work within. So we want to do that. So I think you have the consensus. Am I saying it right, board members, to move forward exploring these options?
We'll look forward to hearing what you're coming back with.
And we're not trying to create any havoc in the community. So parents, we don't want y'all to think they're going to be shut out, shut down. That's not the case. That's not what we're saying. We're saying they're going to explore some different things.
And now's the time to be heard.
Yes. We're clear, and clear in our communication, no code words. This is clear, what you're asking and what we're saying, and we are exploring. And that is exciting.
Let me say it too. Let me say this. Not only are we stating this to the parents and the students, but to our staff as well, who are at MTI and who run these programs, so.
And to the board, Mr. Chair, to the board, Reverend, because we don't speak outside of this, and we will be voting on it, and I am so excited that I heard all the things I heard from the board members. So that is a big one for me.
We'll be voting on it eventually.
Well, I was going to--
Maybe.
Do we know when another work session, like when we can have a timeline for our next work session about this topic, perhaps?
Yeah, as soon as possible.
You can go ahead and say that. Go ahead.
Because of recruiting, you know, the recruiting starts heavy after the first of the year. So that's something we've got to keep in mind, of whether we get out and recruit, you know, for the next year. We don't, you know, want to be wrong one way or the other there. We also have to keep in mind, there is a time schedule. If we were to close MTI, there is a time schedule for its teachers of getting their job placement at other schools. We just have to be cognizant that things have to happen in a particular order, and they do come up fairly quick after the first of the year.
Can you speak to an actual time? I'm sorry, Chair.
They're going to give us the time.
Do we have the calendar? Can we look at this?
Yeah, for work sessions.
So--
Can you come back to us with the work session?
In January.
Maybe the second work session that we have in January? Would that give you some time to kind of pull some more things in together?
Because we want time on both sides. So in my opinion, I believe at this juncture, because this has been extensive conversation we've had today, a lot of eyes in this community will now be on this issue. So I think recruiting may not be as quite an issue like it has been in the past. Because people will be a little more focused on, if they're interested in this program, they need to sign up for it, frankly. We know the school choice window is open until January 31st. So while recruiting is a part of that conversation, I think that also is an interesting piece of this.
January 6th. Well, they go back to school on the 5th.
Yeah.
Well, I want to ensure that they have enough time to get the student input as well, and students only in school for 10, or seven more days.
Right. So that's what I'm thinking, January 20th.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, if I may, my recommendation would be the 20th to give the team time to get the appropriate feedback.
Of January.
Of January after the holiday.
Which would give 11 days in that school choice.
I wouldn't want to rush it again. We don't, it's, right.
And please make sure that we promote this, whatever, how are we getting this input from the students, from the parents, from the community? That it's not just, sometimes things, messages get out, but it only gets out to a select few people. We want to make sure that it gets out broadly, so that we get full, as much participation as we can. So we'll come back on the 20th of January in a work session.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Any--
Yeah, no, thanks for the hard work.
Any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Thank you.
Aw, that's disappointing.
All righty. I feel so new since the break, like a new person.
Go get him, Tiger.
I was just thinking that a lot. We're going to now move forward with our moisture impact assessment report from Ms. Dobbins.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, board members, Superintendent Dr. Gullett, Attorney Powers, and Mrs. Prestapino. So we have recently had our latest moisture assessment of this building. But before we dive into that with our guest from the company that conducted that assessment, I want to shortly talk about the history of this building. And I want to take you on a journey, because through going, through the history helps us plan for history. In 1817, that's how far back I'm going to take you, in 1817, Antonio Alvarez was granted this land from the King of Spain. And you'll note to our west, we have our road Alvarez. In 1907, this building opened for the Ocala Primary School, 1907. Originally, the board meetings were held in the courthouse. Also, the county commissioners' meetings were held in the courthouse. And it wasn't until 1937 that the county commissioners and the school board pulled together to build a building together. And it was not this building. Meanwhile, this school continued as a school. Once we outgrew the 1937 building, it was in the early '60s that then-Supervisor Johnny Shea asked the board to build a new district office. So I think that's important, because you've asked in the past, what is the history? How long have we been talking about this? In 1960s, early '60s, the board decided not to build that new building, which was being eyed over near where MTC currently is located. They then instead decided to remove the school portion of this building. And then in 1964, they occupied the building, and that is when the board meeting started in this room. In 1967, we renovated this building. It is in that 1967 that we failed to do one thing that has put us in this position today. Now, I'm going to go back to 1817. When this land was granted, it was known back then as the Big Swamp Hennick. So this land was swampland. And eventually, in 18, I believe, 1849, we became a town, and so we started to build. This building, when it was built back in the beginnings of the 1900s, it was built, of course, without air conditioning. So it was built to breathe, directly under this-- Directly under this carpet is a wood floor, followed by the crawl space, followed by dirt. So it is not built with a solid foundation. It is built on top of open ground with a crawl space that was made to breathe. It was also built with a very high roof that if you were to go into the attic, you could literally stand and still have to crawl up a ladder to get to the peak of the attic area because it was made to breathe. However, in 1967, when we renovated this building, we failed to, at that time, put a vapor or a moisture barrier between the brick wall and the now current gypsum board walls. So basically, we closed in and created a terrarium for issues. And that has spawned into growth and things that we needed to come in and look more deeply into. So in 2019, we did our first assessment by the same company that just recently came back. However, that 2019 assessment was a visual. So if they saw a concern, they would then dig into that concern a little bit deeper. They did not do what was called a deconstructive type of assessment. When we asked them to return, most recently, a couple of months ago, we asked them to literally cut holes in the wall and look behind the walls. And they did so with cameras and so forth. And then they produced a report, an assessment report that you've all been privy to. So as we decide moving forward, remember what type of land we were built in. Keep that in mind. Keep in mind the renovations that were done that didn't necessarily, back in those days, the thought wasn't about vapor barriers and moisture barriers that have helped create the problems of today. This building, being so old, 114 years old, has seen, well, it's seen the first pandemic. It has seen World War II. It has seen the Great Depression and now it's seen, has seen the current pandemic. So there's a lot of history here and hopefully with that brief history of where we've been, it'll help inform you as the path that we move forward. But without further ado, I'd like to introduce two gentlemen here with us today. They have driven up from Tampa, Florida. They are here from Gallagher Basset, who is the environmentalist company that has done the moisture impact assessment. Mr. John Lejeune, if y'all would both come up, Mr. John Lejeune will speak first. He was actually physically here when the assessment was done and he took part in that assessment and wrote the report. And also with him from Gallagher Basset also is Mr. Mike Sewell, who will speak to you about the report and then we'll have discussions about that assessment report. So without a due here's...
Ms. Dobbins, before you go.
Yes?
You said the assessment in 2019 was a visual assessment?
2019 was a visual assessment.
This one is a what? What is it called?
Deconstructive. Destructive. Deconstructive.
Destructive.
Destructive.
And one more thing, you said in 1960 was, what happened in 1960?
In 1960 is when the then Superintendent Shea asked for this to no longer be used as a district office and to build a new district office over near MTC.
Thank you. And 67 was the renovation?
Yes.
Got you. All right, thank you.
All right.
Good morning. My name's John Lejeune. I work with Gallagher Basset and I was on site here for two days in a row, just kind of photographing, poking and prodding. I got in the crawl space, up in the attic. And the destructive assessment part of the inspection this time around, what Ms. Dobbins was talking about, is physically cutting into walls and looking into inside wall cavities. We typically don't do that during a typical inspection unless requested to do so. And we were requested to do so in this case. So I was out here for two days in a row and put together this moisture impact assessment. So what I'm looking for is moisture, moisture where it shouldn't be. And where there's moisture, there's typically mold. So that is kind of how I go about doing my assessments is looking for water staining, looking for moisture. And to do that, I have, well, just a visual assessment and moisture equipment that gives me moisture readings of the building materials themselves, thermal cameras, borescope camera, and other types of techniques to help me find moisture. So my findings are basically just represented in this report. We did find a combination of water intrusion, which is free water, rainwater, precipitation intruding into the building, moisture intrusion in certain areas, and condensation in certain areas. So it's not just related to a specific vapor or moisture. It's a combination of things that I did see over the two days. I don't know. I guess you guys all do have copies of the report, correct? So my findings were illustrated pretty good in the figures as far as where I found staining versus mold growth, where we did the destructive cuts. Some were more visible than others. Some had, I had to get my borescope camera out. When I say borescope camera, it's a small skinny camera that I can snake down inside wall cavities, up wall cavities, in areas that I can't visibly see or I can't get a camera in to look at. Based on that, it did appear to have what we call assumed mold growth just by looking at it. And in certain, the acronym is AMG. We did find AMG in quite a different, a lot of areas. And in some areas, we did take a surface sample, send it off to a lab, have it analyzed to confirm that it is mold or it's not mold or what else it may be. We looked second floor, we looked the first floor, and we found a few different combinations of things, which are, you know, like I said, just kind of represented in this report.
Want to say anything there, Mike?
Yeah, basically, just kind of reiterate what John's saying is, you know, our assessments, there's a lot of different tools and really it's, a lot of it's your eyes and your nose kind of dictate where you go. And then when you start doing the destructive assessment techniques, you start finding additional things. And so that's basically what we've done here, is we kind of let our eyes and our nose lead us. On top of that, we then did selective cuts throughout the building and identified these areas of concern that we pointed out in the report and kind of made some recommendations on what we feel needs to be done to the building in order to get it remediate or remove the observed conditions. And so that's the gist of what our report is and kind of our purpose of coming here.
Thank you. You guys were very tactful in how you did not want to drop the hammer and say that we're in a sick building, correct?
Yeah, we're not, we're not doctors, right? And so that's not our, that's not our skill, our thing. And so we kind of tell you what's here and then make some recommendations. And then it's a combination of facilities and risk management and there's a lot of people that have to get involved on...
So basically, this building has some issues, is what you're saying? And from the report that I read?
This building has, yeah, we've pointed out the issues that we have discovered, correct?
Mr. Brown?
Yes, let's see. Foundation, we were talking about swampin' back in the day, but I don't think foundation is really a big issue, is it? Is foundation...
Well, when we say foundation, like, yeah, we're not, when you want to talk about the foundation, the fact that there's a crawl space can be an issue if there's no vapor barrier. So what essentially happens is the building is allowing unconditioned air to infiltrate into different wall cavities, whatever. Air that's not passing through the air conditioning and basically getting wrung out. So you have periods of elevated humidity, high humidity outside in Florida a lot. And so the air conditioner kicks on, there's times and opportunities, there you go.
Wow!
Great timing.
It can pull in air, unconditioned air from the outside into the building. And so then when it gets trapped in a wall cavity or floor cavity, there is, presents the opportunity for stuff to happen.
I was thinking structural. We were talking...
Yeah, we're not really, we're not really structural engineers, so we can't really comment on that.
And I just wanted to address that, just for the, for the general population because we're, this is an open meeting.
Understood.
And so we want to get the word out. Okay, so I'm past this swamp thing and I like your analogy to the eye and nose test. I did a nose test, a three-hour meeting, nose test, and trust me, I knew everything I needed to know and I've bought a lot of buildings in my day and generally, within 20 feet, walking in a door, right? You can walk into a structure and you can just about tell what's going on. The windows and the shutters, just in terms of something we own and we might sell or we might market or we might use or what, you know, value, the windows and the shutters and the roof, those are my issues, you know, just in general, if you could address that a little bit, because they got put on and then lost in antiquity. And say butel clock or whatever it is that was in there, it has a one-year, two-year, five-year, some life. And this goes way back and so those were not watertight. And so the water flowing in then found a home. So that's a part that I think, when you say restructure, now I understand ceiling, the building, I understand internal...
Oh, no, the building envelope definitely needs to be assessed and addressed.
Yes, okay. But those windows.
I think, Mr. Brown, some of that question that you're asking may be better for Mr. Knight versus the engineers.
Well, if they dug into it, like, you know, borescope, that's what I was saying, cut a hole, look into it, I want those coming off or something like that. In other words, that's what I would do, just if I was going to buy the building or sell the building.
Yeah, that is a...
Do you know any of that?
Yeah, when we were cutting the holes, we would find, it wasn't uniform. We would find certain areas that had the brick exposed. Some areas would have the brick with the plaster still in place. Some areas, we'd cut a hole and, yeah, you're looking into a boarded up window from the outside. That can also lead to moisture problems on the inside of a building when you cover up windows. I mean, you look around the outside of this building, there's no windows. They've been all covered, which reduces the radiant heat that's allowed to enter in a building, which then, you know, any building that has windows, it's designed to allow a certain amount of sunlight into a building. That sunlight heats it up, kicks on the thermostat, thermostat pulls out moisture and, you know, that whole system is designed to work that way. So when you board up the windows, it may still be cool on the inside, but you're not getting that heat to kick on the AC enough to actually pull the moisture out, which can also lead to other issues.
In addition to the moisture getting in.
Yeah.
So, and I get, and I just, yeah, anything you can do to toss that in because it helps with understanding. I like as specific as you can while being broad, you know, in overall. Because I realize that it's not, you really can't say, you don't even know our purpose probably long-term, but safety is really kind of what you're going toward. And even though you're not a doctor, that notwithstanding, you know, we're looking for information.
Yeah, and when we say moisture too, you know, there can be, moisture is obviously free water that you can see, but there's also water vapor. So the air is kind of like the moisture. So like even within the wall, it may not be visible water running down or visible water in a room. It's also, we're talking about water vapor.
These dehumidifiers that are all, in all these offices.
Right, so, yeah, it's not necessarily just rainwater that we're talking about. There's humidity, which is moisture. So elevated humidity gets drawn into a building.
Yep.
That's considered moisture as well. You just don't see it.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Dobbins, then Vice Chair.
Hi, thank you very much for this presentation. I think my question is directed towards Ms. Dobbins. After the visual inspection was concluded in 2019, what, if any, mitigation was done after that time? I've had a chance to look and climb and go in the basement and everything, but I think it's important for the, for sake of the conversation to know, because I believe it was at least $35,000 worth of mitigation. And what did we get from that?
Yes, absolutely. So when we did the 2019 assessment, again, it was a visual assessment. The company came back with recommendations. Some of those recommendations, two major recommendations were addressing the roof and addressing the envelope of the building, so the bricks. Keep in mind that bricks are porous and that over the years, again, it's 114 years old, we have lost mortar out of the bricks where they have been basically glued together. We have never sealed the building. I could not find any evidence of sealing this building. So without a water seal on the exterior, what has allowed to happen was that water soaks into those bricks. So those were two recommendations that we did not do. They were also the most costly of the recommendations. Things we did do, now prior to the assessment, we had already done some HVAC work. We had already had companies come in and clean the ducts and replace things. We addressed condensation and so forth. The problem with the HVAC system is that without appropriate insulation of the entire building, you will continue to get condensation and so you see the same water intrusion come back through the vents and so forth. We also installed UVC lighting in the ductwork at that time. And then we went into rooms, we had a company come in and actually abate or remediate the mold areas. That included ripping off the gypsum boards and the panelings and things like that, cleaning out the mold and then putting a special coating over the bricks as well. Those things were $35,000, but they weren't all the recommendations that were made at that time because we were also going through a change of administration later on. It was presented to the board, that report was presented to the board, the work session before the pandemic. And so it kind of got lost in the transition and when I moved into my new position, we started addressing some things again and that's when we called for this assessment. This assessment is even more involved in recommendations. Again, you have the same recommendations, the roof, the envelope, but to solve, if we're going to solve the moisture intrusion, you essentially have to take everything back to the brick wall. You have to rip out all of the paneling, all of the gypsum, all of the carpet. You have to take everything back. The reference about this land being previously swamped was not a structural reference. It was to the gentleman's point that you have dirt underneath that allows an unconditioned air, not structural, not talking structural anymore. You usually don't have that issue if you have a solid foundation.
Right.
So that's part of the breeding issue that we have encapsulated in the walls. When we talked with the gentleman, we had a conference call when the report first came out and it was recommended that long-term, people should not be in this building. There are those concerns about, it's called VOX, volatile organic compounds, which were not measured in this assessment because that's... were not measured in this assessment, because that's in the air. It, it is essentially, correct me if I'm wrong, John, the, the gas of the mold spores, and it varies seasonally, and that can also be a health irritant to people who are sensitive. And though, that's, that's the musty smell. When you walk in, you smell that musty smell, that's tho, those VOCS. I don't know if you want to add to that, or-
Yeah, it is MVOCs, it's mi, microbial volatile organic compounds. They are an off-gassing during reproduction of mold, growth and spread. That, that is the, you're, that is the musty moldy odor that you smell. You're, you're not physically smelling mold spores, you're, you're smelling the off-gassing, which is the MVOCs. Um, and they, they, they do affect individuals differently. Everybody has a different medical background, susceptible to certain things in certain quantities, MVOCs, physical mold spores, pollen, it, it, it's all subjective to each individual, and the outcomes are specific to that individual as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Thor, did you have something?
I was just wanting to share a picture with you that I've, that we found yesterday, and it goes to show you, I wish I could take it out, but I shouldn't, because somehow we're going to have to preserve these pictures in perpetuity. If you would just take the bottom piece. Thanks. And it, it's amazing, because it really illustrates how far we moved from what the building originally looked like to what it is now. And I just, I just, late yesterday. Yeah, it's, it's right there.
I guess we get up and look at it.
They'll pass it around, Mr. Brown.
Just gently.
They'll pass it around, Mr. Brown.
All right, thank you.
And when I went in the attic, I could see that old metal roof between the slats, and it's so tall in there, it's like a ballroom.
Yeah, let me take a picture of that.
Um, I think many of us who have come into this building have, especially if you have allergies or respiratory situations, have walked in and could tell something was going on with the building.
Yeah.
And we've, um-
Allison, do you want gloves? Because I know you're allergic.
We, um-
I'll put it right there. Okay.
We have, um, staff members that have also said that they've had different things going on respiratory. So, um, to do this more thorough, because the destructive, the destructive assessment is the more thorough of the two, and, um-
Ms. King got a chance to see it.
This is, this one's correct. This one, okay. Yeah. Yeah, it's a big difference. To, to have the destructive assessment is a more thorough, um, assessment to figure out what was really going on with this building, and with why people were saying they were feeling certain ways, headaches and different things, so, um, you just kind of confirmed what people have been saying for, for a while. Ms. Campbell?
Well, and, and the, the thing that I, I wanted to have you gentlemen reiterate, if you could, was not to say that this is an isolated issue in one particular part of the building, or that this is something that we can just section off this one little section, or let's just say, you know, we're no longer going to use this office, or something. But from what I heard, and if, if this is accurate, if you don't mind reiterating for us, that this issue, or multiple issues, are in multiple locations all throughout this entire building.
Yeah, I would say it's universal, and, and going back to the destructive part of it, um, one thing I didn't mention was, when we would cut holes, I, I have, I did some pressurization tests, and, which basically creates an inert smoke that I can see and follow, you know, where the air is going. Most of the time, I, I didn't even need that analysis, because when we would cut a hole in the perimeter wall, I could feel air, because it's kind of gushing out of there, or even being sucked in, um, which is unconditioned air, kind of just inside the perimeter wall cavities. And, yeah, that, that was chronic throughout the perimeter, just, yeah, just how it's constructed, um, there, there was, there was differences in the certain layers, um, in the windows and missing plaster, some of it was just wood paneling. So there was differences, but it was a, a chronic sort of issue with the perimeter of the building, yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Yes. I, I want to, I've, I've got a feeling that I would like to address purpose, because for me, I'm very interested in health. And that's not necessarily condemning the building, but health, you know, like, where are we going with this, what are we doing, and what is the purpose? My purpose, with any conversations I've had on it, are for immediate health reasons. That's what I'm, I'm concerned with.
A health risk.
Yes, big health risk. So, so if, if I could even ask the chair to recognize superintendent, I would like to have some input about that, you know, around that, so that we, we retain the integrity of an asset, because I don't want to go too far down the line, because I'm, today, in this, in this context, I'm, I'm talking about health and safety. That's really what I'm talking about, because you can go through various renovations, and I don't want to condemn or not condemn or whatever, but this is not a healthy building for me, but I'm, I'm simply a entrepreneurial expert. I am not a qualified expert like these folks. My question is whether I buy it or I sell it, that type of thing. So, and then safety, I want safety. If I'm going to have any responsibility at all, and I know you all feel this way, so that's my interest, so I, if, if you could, somebody could define the purpose, I think maybe the superintendent, define the purpose, because I want people out of this building if we're not going to fix it immediately, or whatever.
Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. And, and to take us back a bit, if you recall, there were health concerns coming forward from, on behalf of employees, and I know some of you have, have shared the same, and so we said that we would do an external inspection, a thorough inspection of the building. For, it was, there were two pieces. Ms. Dobbins, I've been looking to her, there were, there are two components, one we've already addressed publicly.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So we also did a, a structural inspection, so we had a structural engineer come in and visibly inspect the building, and it was deemed structurally sound as is. So that eliminating any structural concerns, we moved on to the environmental inspection.
And due, thank you, Ms. Dobbins, and due to the concerns, um, health-related with this, and based on the recommendations that you heard, shared earlier, about not having anyone in here long-term, I made the decision on behalf of, of my operations, that to move the employees out, so that there would not be any additional risk to them. Felt that was imperative, as you all know, that based on those recommendations, that we move our, our staff, we have 14 staff members that were moving over to existing adult spaces at MTI, not related to the conversation we just had, so I want to be clear, I know they're side by side, but one is not related to the other. We are going to occupy current adult spaces at MTI. I can tell you as an addition, because I was here personally, I came into the building during the course of the, the holes being created, and at that point, I could smell it, and I had several employees that I said, you need to go home. They were visibly having very, I'll describe, and this is not a professional analysis, pretty severe reaction. The smell was quite different than it usually is. I, I, again, I looked to the professionals to describe it, but I had to send employees home. So it, it became very clear to me, it was my responsibility to say, we need to do something, and I need to make sure that our employees are in, in a healthy environment. So that led to, as you all know, contacting you to let you know that we needed to move out of the building.
And thank you, superintendent, for, for, for that clarity and that transparency with this situation, because people will take it the wrong way, or twist it to something different, that it's not, this is not, as Ms. Dobbins and I, I want to thank you for giving us that complete background about this building, so that people understand, this has not been something that was a knee-jerk reaction, this is something that's been ongoing. I've been on the board since 2018, Ms. King, you've been the longest, and I'm sure all of us have experienced different things in this building, when it comes to the environmental aspects of it, and we've had employees that have been in this building much longer than us, we're in and out, but they're here all the time. So when you, when the superintendent tells us that there are people, staff members, that are having adverse reactions to the environment, it, it is, it is truly your right and obligation to make a decision to put them in the safest place that they can be. So I'm, I'm in a complete agreement with you, I support that decision, I think the board members will all agree, support that decision too, because we got to make sure that our people are safe. So, um, going forward, what do we need to do from here? We, we know that superintendent just informed us, there's going to be 14 staff members moving to MTI, um, not affecting anything that's already at MTI, but into already staff spaces at MTI. So what do we, I'm sorry, we'll get Ms. Thor, then out, Ms. Dobbins.
Thank you. Based on the conversation, sometimes there's a silver lining. We, I think we all agree, and we've said this for years publicly, that we have outgrown this boardroom. We outgrew this boardroom decades ago.
Yes.
So I would propose, if we're going to move the 14 employees over to MTI, would we be able to consider having our school board meetings in the MTI auditorium?
It will be.
Clearly.
It will be. From my understanding, Ms. Thor, that is being discussed, and how we're going to do it, and I anticipate, I don't want to be too specific, but I anticipate that maybe our board meeting next week may be our last one in this building for a while. Can I safely say that, superintendent?
That's correct, Chair, and that was part of the conversation we had, and looking at, if, if it's not healthy enough for, full-time, it, it's not healthy enough for the visitors to come, is what, one of the questions I asked. And so it does provide an opportunity for us to open up to a bigger venue, which is still centrally located, for our community to come attend. Conferred with Mr. Christian about the viability of having all of that set up over there, so I know that his team is working on that ability for us to be, to be there and have it.
I'll ask Mr. Christian to get in contact with you individually, and kind of explain that process to you, so that, he has a few days before a holiday, we want him to enjoy the holidays, but I think he can give us a briefing on that prior to the holidays, so that we'll know where we are.
After the holidays.
After the holidays, we won't be here, we'll be-
Our first meeting in January, be it a work session or a-
January 6th, I think.
Board meeting, I can't remember which it is, we'll be there.
Transparency of this is, is, is beautiful for the community, just beautiful. And health, safety, and welfare, absolutely home run, I'm good. I consider it mostly, from this board member's point of view, a procedural issue, and I commend you for stepping forward and, you know, lighting that candle, let's, let's make it happen.
Take them by the horns.
So for the record, so everybody can hear it, come January, board meetings, and we, I guess we're going to have to bring this back, we'll state it again Tuesday night in our board meeting. Attorney Powers, please make sure that we do it the right way, that board meetings and work sessions will no longer, because there's a change of venue, because there's a change of venue, that our board meetings and work sessions will be held at 1614 East Fort King Street. 1614 East Fort King Street, and it has to come back to the board, because we just voted.
Right.
We just voted in the reorganization meeting, that it will be here, so we, that needs to be on our, making sure that we change that, okay?
Thank you, Chair.
Ms. Dobbins, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Where did you want me to go from here?
Any other recommendations, or anything else that you have concerning this situation?
I don't, I commend everyone for making the hard decision, yet an easy decision for the health of employees. As we prepare, we've already started preparing and moving staff over to the MTI, I would like to again state that it has no impact to the student side of that campus. Essentially, what we are doing is in Building 2, which is our staff development area, we have taken training rooms, so if you can envision, open rooms, and ha, and we have moved staff over from Building 3 to then move the district office into Building 3, which comes right after the Office of Legal and down that row. We will be done with those moves by Friday, next Friday, everyone will be moved in, it's not to say that they will be unboxed, but we will, next Friday will be our last day occupying this building.
Thank you.
I do want to state for the record that the moves are being done fiscally responsible, so we are not buying all new things and, and so forth. We are wanting our front office, which will be the face of this entire district, we have some upgrades coming there in the form of a, a new reception desk, because now we're going to have a dual-reception situation, and some flooring needs that will be addressed there. Other than that, there are, other than cleaning and deep cleaning and touching up paint, the, everything else is routine that we're doing there. We did have some lighting that we had to address, because we had some lighting outages. Keep in mind, that campus, we kind of have not done all the maintenance, because we were still trying to figure out what we were doing with that campus, but to make it operational for a board meeting over there, there was some lighting, things that we had to address and so forth. The other costs will be in signage, because we have to let the public, which will have a significant increase of public visitation, we have to make sure they know where, where they're going.
And, and thank you, Ms. Dobbins, because people are going to ask questions, say different things, and put stuff out there the wrong way, and I'm, I'm really about us making sure that we have a clear message of why we, we are going there. Several reasons, it keeps us centrally located and accessible to the community, we're just right down the road, we're about five or six blocks away from here, and it was the, the, the least obtrusive move that we could make to the district and to the staff, the 14 staff members that need to move over. So I, I thank the superintendent for her leadership on this, and making sure that we were able to get the people there, and get a plan, and Ms. Dobbins and everybody that is making this move happen, because I was over there the other day, and they are, they're just trying to make it where we can better serve our district, and not, and it not be a big hindrance to anyone, so, thank you, guys. Mr. Brown?
Yes, and, and to add to that, on the positive side, I'm an offensive player, rather than a defensive player, I am not defensive at all about this. This is an offensive move, and it's the correct move in my estimation, and the community will be discussing it in a very positive light. I, I feel that in, in my heart. They, they, the, the community believes that we will always make the best possible decision based on what we have to work with, and this is a positive decision, in my humble opinion.
And, and, and as Ms. Thor said, Board Member Thor said, it does avail, there, there is a kind of a silver cloud, silver lining in this cloud, because I think it will avail us that we'll have a, a larger meeting area, and the public will have more, more access-
We've done our best to welcome everybody.
Right, right, and, so we're, we know that Ke, Ke, Mr. Christian and his team are going to have some challenges on kind of getting us set up, but they do a great job of making sure that we come forth the right way, and I'm sure they'll do that when we get over there at, at MTI. So, again, for the public, we are moving our meetings on, in January, starting in January, to 1614 East Fort King Street, Ocala, Florida, at the MTI. Superintendent?
Thank you. Chair Cummings, one additional note I would like to provide is our area superintendents who supervise schools, they're going to be moving out to schools. So when I mentioned the 14 going to MTI, it provides them an opportunity to be closer to the schools, and so those three area superintendents, again, who supervise our schools, are moving out to school locations. Thank you. So we have Dr. Hembrook and Ms. Kine- So we have um, Dr. Hembrook and Ms. Kinerd will be at Oakcrest. And Mr. Frazier will be at Lake Weir Middle.
Wow, good move.
Ms. Dobbins?
Thank you. Mr. Christian would like to just add clarification that as we go to that campus, the board meetings will be in the auditorium on that site.
Right, in the, uh, thank you. They will be in the auditorium. I think the auditorium holds a lot of people. I won't put a number of, just a lot of people.
I think it's over 700.
Get that, yeah. And um, so we're gonna, it, it'll be a better situation for our community.
We're gonna have signage?
To address this.
Yes.
Yes, um, the signage and, and everything. And, and do, I do want to make sure that um, Mr. Christian, I'm sure you guys will put something out on the, on our webpage and things, advise some of these changes as well. Attorney Powers, with us saying this, do, is there anything that we need to do legally so that we are still in compliance? Because I don't want us to violate anything uh.
Any, any future advertising notices as to any uh, public meetings will um, incorporate the new location, number one. Uh, number two, I don't believe that any of our um, currently advertised meetings will be impacted other than the fact that we have said that we um, that i- in our organizational meeting, we've indicated that meetings will be held here.
Right.
We'll formally uh, change that. And, and, and we're putting the public on notice now in fact of that. But we will um, for the future, our meetings that were advertised for, I'm not aware of any meetings that were advertised for here that are not um, that will be moved, that we don't have to um, that, that we will, I'm sorry, let me back up. We'll advertise those on the website.
Right.
So any updates or modifications, I'll make sure those are appropriately advertised. Um, and they will be posted on our website as well as a, as a, a change in venue. For those particular meetings.
Can, can, can we vote on this uh, change of location at our upcoming board meeting?
Uh, it could be raised as an issue.
As a comment, board comment.
During comment though, during board time and I'll defer to Ms. Prestipino, she's got something to say there.
The only requirement is to announce it during a board meeting. The board chair will just need to simply say the change of venue has been announced, starting January of 2022. We will be at 1614 East Fort King Street.
So that cures the organizational meeting part of it. But as to future meetings that are advertised, um, I'm, I'm not aware of every, every potential thing we may have advertised that's in it other than, other than our board meetings. But those will be updated on the website as well, so.
Okay, and I, I do ask that we um, I know we'll put some signage out here directing folk down there as well. We want to make sure that the public is thoroughly aware that we are, we won't be in this building. And then what's the plan for this building once we have evacuated the, the building?
From a facility stand, standpoint, we are going to continue to make sure that it is climate controlled because we don't want things to start deteriorating. From there in January, I'll work with um, Amelia over at the warehouse and also our grounds crew, who are the movers, um, to make sure that we remove items from the interior of the building, maintain security, maintain lighting. And then as far as what we do with this building, um, we.
Future conversation.
Future conversation.
Vice Chair Campbell?
And I, I just wanted to ensure while we're, we're talking about informing the public, then the number of people in this brick structure of this building, that's the number of people that we are moving. There is another building just behind this, they're all information technology, they're all staying there. Public relations, the employment, employee relations, all of that is staying in this couple of block vicinity that we have here on this campus per se. It's just the people in this brick building. I want to make sure that that is publicly known. So it doesn't make it look like we are shifting everything of operations uh, to another location right now. It's just fit, the physical structure of this brick building.
Right. Right, she's.
That and our board meeting.
Right.
Right, absolutely.
Right, she's absolutely right. This is the only building that is being vacated. Um, the, as Ms. Campbell just stated, the building right behind us is still going to be there. Employment Services, those are still going to be there. This is the only building, that's why it's only 14 staff members, so.
20, I'm, I'm sorry Chair, 20 if you include the area superintendents which are moving out to the schools.
20, 20 staff members.
Including their staff, yes.
And, thank you.
Seventeen.
Plus their assistants.
14 plus the, yeah, it's six.
14 going to MTI and then the three area superintendents and their secretaries, so six going out to schools.
Right.
Right, that's 20.
All right, thank you.
What kind of math you doing?
New math. I hadn't thought about the secretaries.
Yes, Mr. Brownie.
Yes, uh, and, and so as I see this, it is a celebration of progress. Uh, on the, on the positive note, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm stressing it so much, but I'm so excited about offense. I love to run up the score uh, in, in a sports metaphor. I just, that's just the way I roll. So uh, this is a celebration of progress and it is very exciting from a safety, health, safety and welfare point of view. And I believe that we're going to be able to get a lot more mile, mileage stewardship from our existing talent. Cause one of the things I noticed when I walked in here was the coping uh, with various area machines uh, uh, of, of staff. And I think this is going to be, pardon the pun, a breath of fresh air. Very exciting. So if we could kind of celebrate it uh, on our website as a very positive note, uh, it would, it would mean a lot to me.
Thank you, Mr. Brownie. That is a breath of fresh air. Breath of fresh air.
It only took since 1967.
67. Wow, 61 years they've been having discussions about this building from 1960, that's a long.
Trying to remediate.
Long, long, long time, long time, long time. So um, thank you, thank you. Any, any, any public comment concerning this issue?
Yeah.
Mr. Knight, you have anything? You just here for support, right?
Thank you for that presentation from this.
Thank you gentlemen.
Person, I, I really enjoyed that.
Thank you. Alrighty, uh, we're going to move on with board comments, attorney, starting with um, Ms. Nicole Prestipino, any comments? Attorney Powers?
Um, just a couple of brief things. Um, e, uh, in, in our agenda review, um, the board chair asked, uh, after the agenda review that I clarified, that there was one item which was advertised, it's being, it's, it's already uh, uh, being fixed or has been fixed and will be properly updated. Uh, in which for Cambridge Academy, we had indicated that um, uh, the cost for the Cambridge Academy fees was $250.
$250?
For Denellen School, uh, typically on the form, at the top of the form, we put the running total of amount, total amount spent for Cambridge Academy over the entire course of the year. And uh, I, the $250 ended up in both places where that should have only been for.
Right.
Denellen. Um, so that's been fixed. Just to be completely transparent, um, the, the new number at top will be the running total of everything that's been spent for all schools.
Right.
In Cambridge Academy, so.
So do we, for the, do we need to go ahead and just pull that and discuss that that night and just say the damn vote for it, pull off consent?
Yeah, I, I, i- if any board member wishes to, but I don't, I don't believe it needs to be pulled specifically. I just wanted to, uh, to have it updated, um, so that, and it is updated on the agenda and.
Okay.
If we wish to pull it, we certainly can, but.
Cause I know some folk have seen it, you and I talked about this. Some folk have seen it and I don't want them to think we're trying to do anything.
Right, no, it's.
Out of transparency, but that's why. That's why you're talking, okay. So we won't pull it, well, I won't pull it. But um, if need be, we can, if it's there.
And um, that would be all. And I'd say uh, happy, happy holidays and we get the Christmas craic coming up. And I'm sure each of the board members will have any comments they want to make regarding that as well.
You running on the float?
I am.
Alright, good, good job.
Myself and my, my son and daughter.
Alright, alright. Superintendent?
Thank you, um, Chair Cummings. Members of the board, I appreciate um, the conversations today. I appreciate your input, your feedback. I'm proud to be part of this team, that we focus on students and we take care of our employees and we respect them, so thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Brownie?
Yes sir, thank you Chair. I would like to um, I would like to acknowledge, I have privately, but I would like to acknowledge how excited I was. Session before last, uh, I, I believe it was Monday, the days run, uh, run together. But um, the welcoming, the Chair, our Chair, welcoming a guest, uh, a, a member of the community to our uh, program. It was the most heartening comment that I've ever heard since I've been on this board. Uh, to our, our public. Uh, it was beautiful. And Chair Cummings, I just want to tell you how much I appreciate you acknowledging these people and doing it in such a positive. I'm, I'm just a very aggressive uh, positive side as compared to negative side in putting out warnings and, and, and all sorts of things. That was, that was a home run. Now I have something that uh, I would like to pass out if I may. You've heard this. All are well aware of it, but in the interest of sunshine. And sir, I, I'll give you one and just.
That's fine.
You can have it up soon.
If I may, I'm running short, I, I wish I had one more. This is Stanton Weersdale District 2. And the uh, this is a safety issue, the superintendent's working on it. Uh, you, you recall from our meeting with the county, the county's working on it. Uh, a lot of people have, and we're in the 65th year of Stanton Weersdale. And so uh, this is near and dear. I know uh, health and safety is, is everything, especially when you're talking about students. So if you'd look at the, at page number one, I think everybody, I think it was stapled together the same way. I'll just hold this up. If you can see a, a, a picture, it has a mailbox and a, there is a sidewalk embedded in that uh, street. But if you'd lift to the second page, uh, and you see a road that is intersecting 134th. But don't, don't, I'm not, I'm not even going to get confused with the roads because there's a lack of street signs uh, at, at this school. Now, my reason for bringing this up is I have documented uh, through the Stanton Weersdale Student Safety Video. It's so hard to get, pull this together. This is 9, this is 65th year of this school um, existing. And it started in a bit of a cloud. The cloud was segregation and it started that way. And it, as you can see, the road that was the primary road for, for 50 years, uh, that all traffic went to that ro, uh, down this road that, that serviced the school. And all, the entire black community is back up this road uh, into the white space as you, where the, where the photographer was standing. And that's on page two. So there is no stop sign. Uh, there is a, in one of these, you'll see a white, the next page, you'll see a white stripe that was just put in under the superintendent's direction last, uh, last week, if I'm not mistaken. Maybe it might have been eight days ago. But that was the first indication that we had cars coming and going at a high rate of speed, buses coming down from the school. And cars, here's, here's the, here's the, the point that I want to make. That if you look on page two, or first look on page one, and you can see along there, envision a couple of kids heading to the school. They're 50 feet from the actual property. And um, and I, I say that lightly, it might be 35 feet. But they're coming along, they're skipping along and they're, they look forward to the school. Now flip to page two and you'll see that now, envision yourself being a car driver. You're driving along and it's almost a curve to you. There is no stop sign. There is no yellow sign. There is no indication that we are at a school. And this is just, this is just, yeah, to me, it's negligence. I'm not trying to put us in a terrible position on a, uh, if there is an incident, but uh, in a courtroom, but this is negligent. So we've got to get this happening and our superintendent is working on it. I can't talk to you all individually, but I can talk in this group. And that's why I'm, I'm doing this. And so if you can see this, if you have any questions, uh, please uh, ask them. And it will empower our attorney and it will empower our superintendent when they get over with the county. Because there's a lot of diverse responsibilities. Some people uh, handle signage, some people handle concrete, some people handle roads, some people handle the right of way. All of that is very determined and we also have statutes that, that make it incumbent on the superintendent to watch out for the safety of our children. So now you, you have this, we also have the video. We have that for the public or for you all and for anyone who is involved. We just got to bring this up to speed. I, my goal is this, whenever I go out for an action move, my goal is to be able to imagine this as either white or black. No difference to any other school in this district. And with that said, I want them there this afternoon. I want them there as, you know, ASAP. So having brought it to the board like this, it helps me be able to feel comfortable in my heart that I've had the conversation uh, with the powers within uh, this school district. So are there any questions at all while I'm on the soapbox?
Mr. Brownie, I, I, my concern with this is that um, and I don't know if the superintendent or attorney will know. This is beyond our purview. As far as this is something that I think is either DOT or Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles, someone. And then as far as, and I see, and God, God knows, I see exactly what you're saying.
Okay.
There should be a stop sign or a yield sign or something. I get, I get it.
Yes sir, Title 6 and just to answer your, your, your inquiry there, Title 6, walk-in zone, it is our responsibility. It is our responsibility, absolutely. We, we do have statutory power and I'll let them, I'll let the, the professionals here speak to that. But it is our responsibility.
And then.
Child safety, walking to school.
Child safety is, when I look at this fourth page and I see that, cause I drove down that road. Based on these conversations you had, and there is no stop sign. But I have to ask, is that access road, is that, is that family land that's up in there?
No sir, that is not access road. That is a road, road. That is a real road. That is a school, that is uh, under the statute, what is it, 3, uh, 26, 286, 361. That is 50 years, it only needs to be used for seven years.
Right, right.
It is a road, road. No adjective in front of it.
I drove it, I drove it. I drove it, I drove it all the way around through into the other hard road, so I, I know exactly what you're talking about. But when I say that, is it, was that road there because of the families that live there or what? And attorney, please speak to this because I think, I really believe that this is truly beyond our purview as, as a school board. I think we may need to, again, and I've said this before, the, we need to call to the county commissioner or, or somebody out there. But I don't think that we have the authority to put up stop signs and things of the such.
Chair, may I address that?
Hold on, hold on, let me, let me, let me hear from the attorney.
But, but let, let me just give some context, that's all I'm, and, and then I do want to hear, I, I, if I may. 1904, that was the, that was the survey. These were some of the original people in this county. 1904, uh, for a chronology. 1956, we as a school district, put it, put the school there and used the primary road in front of those homes. All of those homes were there well before anyone, anyone was even in this room was alive. So no, that road was existing and we put it there because it was a black school for that black population. So that road existed and it was our responsibility to put a school there by law because they needed to be educated. So no, that uh, uh, full, uh, full authentic road, road was there in 1904 beforehand. Uh, very, very proud, positive. very proud, positive, original population in this county, one of the original populations in this county settlements. So, that was, and I'll, I, I just had to put it in context.
Yeah, we got, I got it. Go ahead.
Yes. The agency, you're correct, and, and you are correct in, in different respects, and that is that the agency with jurisdiction are the only ones who have the authority to actually do any repair, any improvement, any replacement, any placement of signs, anything like that. We are not the agency with jurisdiction. We do not have jurisdiction to place stop signs, or control crosswalks, or anything like that in those areas. That being said, we could only do that on our property. Once you step over our property boundary, it's outside our authority, as we're not the agency with jurisdiction. The agency with jurisdiction, depending on where we are, can be a municipality, a county, or the Department of Transportation for the state of Florida. In this case, it would be not the city or the state, it would be the county, it would be the agency with jurisdiction. That said, Florida statute 1,006.23 outlines a course of action if we, if there's a determination that there may be a hazardous walking condition within that, within that walk-in zone. The hazardous walk-in condition is outlined very specifically by statute as to what constitutes a hazardous walking condition. And that analysis includes that we're, the superintendent can address to the county that there is a potential problem. At that point, and I've spoken with the superintendent about this, at that point, the agency with jurisdiction, Marion County, along with a representative of the sheriff's office, along with a representative of the school board, shall inspect the area to determine whether it is a hazardous walking condition. And that's not a, that's not just a subjective decision, there's actually measures to be made and taken into account to determine whether a hazardous walking condition exists based on the condition of the road, and based on the traffic, and based on the type of road, and speed limits, number of factors. Once that has occurred, then the three representatives determine hazardous walking condition or no. If no, then we can proceed to appeal, and there's, it's, it's, it's laid out as to what we do in that case. If yes, then the agency with jurisdiction has to develop a plan as to how it is to be repaired, and from there, there is a, it's, it's put into a planning process and phase, and progress monitored from there. So, that's all statutorily driven. What it requires from us is for us to notify the agency with jurisdiction and request that we have that, that we have that review with, and, and meeting with the agency with jurisdiction and the sheriff's office in order to determine, and see if we have agreement on whether it's a hazardous walking condition or not.
So it's not just someone going out there eyeballing it? There are some specific systems.
We can't just look at it and say, hey, in our opinion, this is a hazardous walking condition.
Right.
It's outlined by statute as to what that is, and that's a decision that's made-
By, by that group.
-by representatives of all three agencies.
Okay. Now, because Mr. Browning is adamant about this, have we done what we need to do as a school district to get this activated, get that group to go out there and put those things in place?
We, we've initially taken a look in, at the area to determine what the conditions are, and from there, that's something that the operations side will be working on with legal, in fact, to, to begin the process of informing-
The other entities.
The other entities, that we may have a hazardous walking condition, what we do next.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, and I, and I don't recall, like, because I know that county has been out there in the school board, but I don't recall anyone from the sheriff's office being there. Do you, do you-
We've had, we've, we've had them there, along with congressional, along with legislators, we've had them all there, and, and everybody is in agreement, and, and what the chair just said, this is wonderful, because it's pulling everything together, and then what we got from legal there was, was perfect, because now we are meeting our responsibility just beautifully, because everybody's tried many, many times. I know, I've been involved for 20 years, 20 years, of, of utter frustration, twice, we've raised the money, and right now we do have the money, so, and right now we have the intent for safety, and we have talent. I, I just wanted it addressed, and I'll back, I'll back away, I'll let anybody here, everybody here has the same sense of safety, and we will address the safety, and, and, and our sheriff is dead on. But he needs to know we are, we have noticed, and county needs to know we've noticed, public needs to know we've noticed, community needs to know we've noticed, and these kids need to be able to walk safely through there, like they're in any school, regardless of the history of the school.
Other than what, this is my concern, other than what, and we've stated this several times, this went back to you going out there. I talked to former board member Bobby James, he stated he-
Had Bobby out there.
So, I, I'm not sure what we, as a board, have not done to state that we understand that there is an issue, and this issue needs to be resolved.
It's not in our-
It's not within our, yeah.
But that, like I said, that was the first I've heard of the sheriffs, and that, and their department, or however they do that. So, if we get those three entities together, like you said, then I think that will probably give some clarity and information that we didn't know, you know, how to-
Yes, absolutely.
So, let me ask, do we, and I'm just asking you guys as a board, is it some letter that we need to formally, formally send to some person to state that we, as a board, see that there is an issue, and we would like them to explore it? Because you're telling us that you've had congressmen, and these are people that are much, have much more influence than we do, and if they haven't gotten it done, I'm trying to figure out how you-
Toss it back to here, Mr. Chair, they toss it back to this board, and this board, here, 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 going back to a sports metaphor, we are at the goal line, and we're going to push the ball over the goal line, and it hasn't had a, a, a specific advocate that was from there, you know, specifically had all the components in place to do the blocking and tackling and pushing, and get the ball over, and, and score full safety. Everybody's had the right intent, it just has not taken place, and now you have board member Browning to deal with on the issue, and everybody has all the exact same intent, but just not the history.
Attorney Powell, what can we do, what can we do to, what can we do?
It's already in the works.
Okay. So it's already in, so there's nothing more?
Where we are is that we are developing a, the letter under 1,006.23-
Okay.
-to initiate a response from the other districts, and to set up those meetings for review. Now, normally, it doesn't get to the analysis of having to go through 1,006.23, because if there is a, a road condition which isn't ideal, or it might be unsafe, or any number of factors, that often is just taken care of by the agency with jurisdiction, and no need to enact any other set of procedures. If we notice that that has been overlooked, or neglected, or anything like that, then 1,006.23 lays out a way in which we can initiate the process so that there is, so it doesn't just sort of creep on and go on for any extended length of time. And that specifically then requires the three representatives, as we discussed, and Ms. King was pointing out, with the sheriff's office included.
Yeah.
As well as then going through the process of determining, based on those criteria which are within statute, whether a hazardous walking condition exists, and I can't stress enough that it's not a matter of opinion, it's a matter of then, some specific measures and the types of road, and, and the number of traffic that goes on that road at the time that students may be walking to or from school. So there's an assessment that's done. So, that, and, and, and at that point then, you know, if, if anything, even if a hazardous walking condition were not determined under the statute, at least then it presents notice to the agency with jurisdiction that even if it may not be specifically required by statute, it's something that we have done our due diligence-
Right.
-bring to the attention.
So, let me ask this, can you bring us back in a, in a few weeks, let us know where we are with this? Because apparent, this is not going away, because Board Member Browning is the advocate for that, I understand his enthusiasm about that, just in the, in the next board meeting, let us know where we are with, if you've heard anything back.
Yeah, I'll, I'll announce that.
And I don't, I'm not trying to tie up our resources, but it is vitally important. Student safety is our importance, and Board Member Browning is, is, he hasn't let this go, so I, I, I love the pit bull tenacity that he has with it, so he's locked on, and so he's going to ride it till he, till he let go, so.
That was a problem.
Will we get a resolution?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Browning?
No, sir.
Thank you.
And I will make myself available to the superintendent and her staff as need be, so that we can address as, as is required.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Thor.
Thank you. Yes, let's talk about the Christmas parade, because I need a hard count now of who, who's coming, I don't, you know, how many people, because the float is only so big. And I have heard from just about everybody, I think, I, I don't know that I've heard from you, Dr. Goult.
She's doing with Mr. Christian.
She's doing the-
That's right, you're doing the announcing.
For the TV.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I've got you.
I'm commentating with them, too.
All, all two of you? And I have, and I have you, and I have you, Board Member Browning, will you be joining us?
Yes, I am a, I'm a definite, definite maybe, and I would say, I, I would say I'm-
Hard yes or no?
I, I would say, put me down hard, yes, and if I'm, if I'm not around, then go to the funeral. I, I'm going to go, I'm going to be as, as definite as I can be.
Thank you. It's better to over, have more than less when it comes to room on the float, so thank you, I appreciate that.
Oh, thank you, was this me, me plus one?
Yes, we got you. Yep, all right, thanks. And also, we are encouraged by the parade organizer to meet at 3:00 PM at the McPherson Complex. We, the, the float, our float, will be very easy to see, it's the Paglia's float for us, it'll say Marion County School Board, it's always towards the front of 25th Avenue, because we're one of the first floats, if not the first float. We end, in terms of logistics, we start at McPherson and we end at the Riley, so keep that in mind in terms of transportation. At the McPherson Complex, probably the closest you'll be able to get for parking will be the Veterans Park, the library over there, and then walk across the street. Some people I know have taken two cars and parked one at the Riley so that they could get back, so that'll be up to each of us to, to figure out. So thank you for the hard count, we'll see everybody at the Ocala Christmas Parade, and honor the big man.
The date of, the-
It is Saturday.
Yes.
Yes.
The date, the hard-
December 11th, December 11th. Yes, Mrs. Mosley will get a kick out of that. When is the Christmas parade? July 12th. It's become like this ongoing joke.
December 11th.
Yeah, December 11th, Saturday, 3:00 PM at the McPherson Center, be there, be square. Okay. And the second thing that I had, and I think that's my last thing, is that I'm just really proud of this board for continuing to take the bull by the horns on things, you know, the bucks are stopping with us, you know, there's been some ongoing concerns that we talked about today, throughout the day, and they're, they're being addressed, and it's always a little bit of a mystery to me when, especially when there is a formal process, you know, procedures that you can go through. So when there's been concerns that have been ongoing for years, I'm not sure why, but that's just the way it is. So, I'm thankful to this board for everything, the energy and the enthusiasm that everyone brings to the table, and, and just the wealth of different knowledge. So, I'm, I'm pretty happy with the way things are going, and, and it's fun to be on this side, and just be more of an observer. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Thor. Ms. King?
I do not have anything other than thank you to the staff today for your great presentations of, you're back there. I really enjoyed hearing the history of this school building, you know, and I really thought, Ms. Thor, you were going to talk to that a little bit with, or no?
Oh, yeah, I can mention that, that's right.
Yeah, because yesterday after our meeting, we, actually, we saw a closet or something that was open, and I was like, oh, what's that? And then next thing you know, Nancy's coming out with this book, and it is amazing, and this book that Nancy is holding up-
Right here.
...are minutes from school board meetings, and I believe that book was what, 19-
1893, from 19, until 1983 is when all the minutes were done by hand, in cursive.
In cursive, yeah.
We may have some expertise in, on staff, or I would be in very, in support of museum quality, this needs some curating, and it really does, so watch your, watch your nose around that, I'm, I'm just saying. Mucho cuidado.
Oh, well, there's that, yes.
Yes, please be careful.
Yeah, it was pretty amazing stuff, like, yeah, and it even showed like teachers-
The vault.
All that room, the vault, and those are the official-
They're making like $20.
Absolutely.
And this is why our budget is so large, because back then, I think teachers, it started $25 a month, and their school buildings had no toilets, no library-
No pump.
No pump.
Pump.
No blackboards. So I think we've come a little ways.
A long ways, when you saw, it was just very amazing.
Can I ask a question about that? And I'm, I'm really a history buff when it comes to things of such, how many of those books were in there? Just one?
No.
No, there's-
From 1893 all the way to 1983.
I, I, I would like to ask this board, to let's, at some point, do something where we can archive these books. I would love for one, we have the Black History Archives at Howard Academy, I would love for one of those to go in there, because what it does, it has my history in there, as well as others' histories in there, and I think that is something that we need to preserve, and it shouldn't just be in a room. Mil doing, and, and getting sicker, we need to do what we can, and I'm sure that the University of Florida would love to have something like that, and work on a project like that. Some doctoral student would love to see, going back that far.
These are all pictures of the one-room schoolhouses that, that got eventually consolidated, and it was because of the Rosen, Rosenwald-
Rosenwald.
Yes, Rosenwald schools, they got consolidated, and then the Rosenwald Project is what moved everything forward, and that's where we found the picture of the, this school board building, and, and it's just really amazing. So, yes, I really hope that we can digitize and, and do whatever an expert would do, and that y'all would think it'd be worth the money.
Absolutely.
It's priceless.
I think because it's so-
We could probably get donations.
I think because it's so old, there'll be some historical grants that could help-
Yes, absolutely.
Go ahead, Nicole.
We actually are currently on Book 29, and we would need to defer to the attorney if we are allowed to move those books. Those are official minutes of the school board.
Okay, so go ahead.
I'll look into that.
Thank you.
And just also, those books have to be put in a fire-safe room, so just keep that in mind, they cannot be left open, it must be in a fire-safe vault at all times, so.
You really are supposed to wear white gloves when you handle them because of that-
Chair, I, I have, out, out in Stanton area, in that community, some incredible photography, of, of photos, that, it, it just must be collected. It's, and, and we are in the 65th year, and I want to see some celebration of that effort, of that community, this year, by the district, because you don't hit 65 every time, you can't go back, right? We did it, we did, 65 years, think about that. That's like retirement, that's an entire lifetime of work, for example.
And thank you, Elena, for coming and bringing, and letting us know-
Yes, bringing that up.
-about that, because I, I, I believe in preserving things, and right now, I'm looking at trying to find some history in different things, and different things that have happened in Marion County, and we, apparently, we got a room full of it.
Amazing.
And so the board is aware, those books will be moved next Wednesday, very carefully, we will be putting them in the fire-safe vault located at MTI, that Mr. Ayers currently has, until we can do any further more conversation on this.
And maybe we can't put the actual books in them, but maybe we can have some of those artifacts, some type of way, transcribed, or pictures are staken, because I would love for those, I would-
Certainly ways to do that.
-see those things around the district. Yeah.
Yeah, there is some amazing, like, when you're reading through it, it's amazing, like, it was like the highlight of yesterday, today, and everything, and I want us to be very careful that it's even under lock and key, what's in there, because that is-
Irreplaceable.
It is irreplaceable, when you're just flipping through it and seeing what was taking place 100 years ago, and, and just, yeah, I don't even have to say anymore.
Transportation wagons.
The transportation is just so telling, so I would really- So I would really like to see us be careful, it has to be in the fire vault, but lock and key because if someone just walked off with that, it's like.
They have to check in with myself or Nicole. Nicole and I will be the ones, besides Mr. Ayers, that will have a combination to the vault to access that for any community members. And if any community member does, they will have gloves and it will all be oversight by myself or Ms. Presspatino.
Okay, good, I'm just glad, cause I think we need to be very.
Definitely want to preserve that, that's priceless, can't be replaced.
Thank you, board.
Cannot be replaced.
Ms. Thor, anything else?
You're all on top of that.
Yep, I don't, I was just, I don't know what I was talking about before we got on that really good stuff. Oh, I know, I was telling Ms.
And we had already talked about school board building and everything and I forgot all about it.
Yeah, and that's what it was, I was telling Ms. Dobbins, thank you for, just that background, you know, and, and then it also enlightens us to be better board members and to see how far technology and things just come along and when we know better, we do better, most certainly, so. And that's all I had today, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell?
Yeah, just to, to second or ditto what Ms. King was saying, I, I was just gonna mention that we had three items on our agenda today, three, but they were all very, very important to the inner workings of this district and what we're trying to do to move forward with student outcomes. The community will start hearing student outcomes a lot out of chair coming and potentially my mouth as well, because we, we had a lot of emphasis on that in the Florida School Board Association Conference, why we need to always focus on student outcomes instead of adult input. And so when you hear us make those, say those phrases, it's with good reason because everything we need to be doing has to be focused on student outcomes. But additionally, we, we do have to look to the things that require adult input and I'm gonna say, all the hard work this board is doing on the policy work that we've been doing for the past couple of weeks. We're not finished yet, we still have additional work to be done, which will be in January at our new location. But just grateful that this board is putting in that hard work that is so, so needed to work on the policies that we're doing. Also want to say a special thanks to the wellness team in the district because I know I've been participating in the 12 Days of Fitness. I added my seven pushups this morning, but you won't see a sweaty selfie of me. The only district employees are gonna understand this, but Wellness is, is putting on a contest right now, 12 Days of Fitness, we keep adding an exercise every day. And I know that this board supports getting fit and staying fit throughout this season, so it's been fun following along, but I am not doing a sweaty selfie, which is something that people, if you want to enter the contest, that's what you have to do, not enter any contest, cause you're not getting a picture. But then the last thing is on Saturday, we are definitely gonna have a lot of fun at the Christmas parade, but I'm also looking forward to the Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast that morning at 8th Street Elementary School, which is a Marion County Ocala tradition. Also our district middle school volleyball tournament at Westport High School, I'll be there for that day. And then obviously the Christmas parade. Grateful that this board is participating again, but also all of the many, many, many school groups that will be marching and performing and all of the work, even if they're not representing a school, we have students riding floats for other district, or not district sponsored things, but other, the MCYFL champions and all, those are all our kids too, not all, but a lot of those are our kids too. There's just lots and lots of students that are participating in the Christmas parade. And again, if we're focusing on student outcomes, all of that health and vitality that they have in participating and being a good community citizen is all a part of that. So it really is just a great time to live in Marion County, Florida. That's it.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I am, I am thoroughly pleased with how much information we got this morning from all the teams this morning, from Mr. Hurley and the attorney concerning the residential districts, our districts to the MTI, MTC updates and, and to Ms. Dobbins and the team for this building and, and what's, what's happening in our superintendent and for making sure that everything has gone forth the right way. Sometimes we, people wish that we had the little short meetings, but if we do the little short meetings, it's, we, we miss stuff and we are, we're not getting the correct information out there. And we have thoroughly discussed some things this morning, very thorough. And I'm, and I'm, I think our discussion has been to the, to the betterment of our community as a whole. I am, I'm grateful to each and every one of my board members, fellow board members, the superintendent and all of our staff members around this district that make Marion County schools what it is. We, we often hear about the negative things, but there are so many, so many great things that happen every day that fly under the radar. We, you know, you hear about the one bad situation with a student, the one bad situation with a staff member, but what about the thousands of thousands of thousands of positive things that happen every day in this district, the thousands of times that buses are on time, the thousands of times that kids are in school and we, we miss all those things because we, we focus sometimes too much on the negative things. It's our job, it's the superintendent's job, the, the district's job to make sure that we correct deficiencies when they, when they show up and know that this board and this, this superintendent, this administration is committed to correcting the deficiencies and making, making sure that we get those things right because we want to make sure that we are having positive student outcomes. So I'm looking forward to, to the toy campaign tomorrow, which is, everybody should have gotten that, the Teacher of the Year campaign tomorrow, I guess tomorrow, and the Ricky Teacher of the Year campaign tomorrow. I didn't, did I say something?
That's not, well, okay. You're a van.
Caravan.
Go on, go next.
Caravan, that's what I meant.
Keep going, keep going.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's a secret.
Oh, okay.
No, it's not.
Oh, boy. Anyway, so that's coming. We have the Christmas parade this weekend. Ms. Campbell has already broke out about the, the pancake breakfast and it's so many different things that's gonna happen this weekend. So I, 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 I want to say this, please be safe, please continue to be safe in, in all the celebration. Let's be smart, let's do things responsibly. We just want to do the right thing when it comes to being safe. And we want everybody to have a great Christmas, a safe Christmas. This Christmas is, to me, I, I expect this to be the best Christmas ever for me, because it may, we never know if we're gonna see another one, we never know. So make this the best Christmas that it can be, make this the best holiday season that it can be. Celebrate with your family, do, celebrate responsibly, I'm always gonna say that, y'all gonna say, he always say that, celebrate responsibly. And we want to get all of our students and our staff back in the new year and we looking forward to all the different things that's gonna happen in this new, this upcoming year. So, and I do want to say this as well, we, a couple of weeks ago, we had the hospital district here and I put out a challenge on behalf of our board members. And that we are, we are looking forward, so this is gonna be my second trash talking statement to county commission, who's, who's the charity county commission?
I think it's Zalik.
Uh, Zalik, yes.
Carl? Call him by your first name. Carl, where you at? I ain't heard nothing from you yet. To our new president of the city council, Iri Pathay, where you at? I'm starting to trash talking right now, okay? Now this isn't script and I'm not reading the script. We, we are challenging you all to a fitness, what is it, step, step thing, step, most steps. So you guys, big enough, bad enough, come talk to us, cause Marion County School District is gonna win this thing, so. We looking forward to you guys coming out and you're gonna hear some more trash talking coming from me. Eric Cummings. Anything else, anybody?
I think that's enough.
Oh, Kelly wants to trash talk, she really wants to trash talk. She been waiting for this.
I think we need to ensure that we have the parameters and we have the tracking mechanism down. So I think that's kind of what, I think the hospital district and possibly our wellness team and, and others was gonna work to help us figure that out. So as long as we're all on the same system, tracking the same ways, all of that, then certainly, let's trash talk all, I just want to make sure we have the parameters set first.
Let me see you at the parade, I'm gonna talk trash in person.
I like the wrestlers that start talking the trash before the match starts.
I, I think we've already done that. That's what we're doing.
I threw the first rock, so.
There you go.
Okay, okay, so.
We're using it in the app, whatever we're doing.
We just want them to know that we ain't scared, we ain't scared. We ain't scared. That's, I know that's grammatically wrong, but we ain't scared, all right? With all things being done, can I get a motion?
Yes.
Not yet, okay. With all things, can I get a motion? Oh, we don't need a motion, adjourn. Meeting is adjourned today at 12:39 PM.